Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 24th meeting of the Franklin Board of Education. The meeting has been properly hosted. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Sprague.
Here.
Dr. Beer?
Here.
Mrs. Wukowski?
Here.
Dr. Khan?
Here.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Here.
Mrs. Yank?
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you. And can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made by Mrs. Wukowski, seconded by Dr. Khan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item four, Health Department Presentation, Tobacco Poster Winners. Ms. Conway, please.
Yep, either one.
Thank you for having me. My name is, oh, this is my, my name is Megan Conway. I'm the Drug Free Coalition Coordinator for Volition Franklin, and I am here representing the Franklin Health Department and Volition Franklin. So this is our 27th year doing the tobacco poster convention contest. As a history of it, it came with the changes in tobacco trends. So we started 27 years ago, going into school, to those seventh grade students, giving them a presentation on the history of tobacco use, how it affects their bodies and minds, you know, why tobacco use is not good for adults, and then they'll take that presentation, and they kind of run with it. They get to make a convention poster. We had over 230 poster submissions this year, which was fantastic, and they were all amazing. So, Health Department was very excited to go through those. With that, we had gone through those posters that we received. We sent them out to people throughout the community, the police department, fire department, Volition members, and the community.
We voted on those posters. Through that voting process, we had 10 top winners and five honorable mention students that were chosen for 2023, our Tobacco Prevention Poster Contest. So with that, we had those judged on creativity, messaging, and youth appeal, and that was how those all came to fruition. So those students all received a Visa gift card, a certificate of congratulations, and their posters were printed out on foam boards for them to take home and be able to hang up as well. So you guys should have packets, and for the students that weren't able to attend tonight, I did include all 15 of those for you guys to all go through and see, and they're all very fantastic. So with that, I would like to invite the students that are here up to present their posters to the audience and to the school, the school board members as well.
There you go. Yeah, take your poster out.
Everybody come on right up here.
Sometimes what the kids do is sort of walk in a line past all of us and just sort of show us your poster, then we can see them one by one.
And then you can show it to the audience.
That's fine. So somebody has to be first.
We don't bite, I promise. Come on.
Hold it and walk back. Yeah.
Good job.
Excellent.
Very nice.
Oh, I like the color in that one. Beautiful flowers. Good job, Lynn.
And when you get to run, stop there, and then turn around.
And show the audience.
Show the audience.
Good job, honey. Very nice. I love the baby. All right. Good job, ladies.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate it, and you're welcome to, you're welcome to stick around for the rest of the meeting, but there is a reason we do this first. Claire, it's gonna be a minute.
I'm so sorry.
Sorry.
CRC is next?
Oh, it is. I'm sorry, it is. I thought community comment was next. I'm sorry.
Just kidding.
Thank you very much. Now there's many more chairs, and we can get more, we have more right here that we can get out if people would like. So give me a second to get settled. And we're, next will be the Community Reintegration Center Presentation. Please.
Good to go.
Ms. Manchin, sorry.
Can we hear me? Okay. My name is Claire Bastian, one of the Associate Principals at Franklin High School, and I also support the Community Reintegration Center. So really excited to share with you through our board update today. So just starting with our mission and vision of our program at the Franklin Alternative Youth Program, the mission is for us to provide a safe, nurturing, tailored environment where students engage in learning to develop the skills and habits needed to be successful in school and in life. But then our vision is also to instill the love of learning in our students, so they're able to reach or exceed their potential, navigate their own path, achieve their goals and dreams, and positively contribute to our community. And so between those, that mission and vision, we then were able to find our student focus. So if we look to the next, can see all of our work trying to channel through three different main goals. So first, do our students feel seen and valued as individuals and feel safe to take some risks? Are students being appropriately challenged in order to grow, and that we're really committed ultimately for our students to be reflective learners, critical thinkers, and connected citizens? So ultimately, just kind of giving an overview of the students that we serve, so this year we've been able to impact more than 80 students through our program, and this is kind of comparing to last year. So we had 58 that we were able to reach in the prior school year. And so why we had that number shift is one of the main pieces, as our dorm restrictions were lifted, so kind of thinking about those COVID actions kind of being undone, which is nice because then we were able to integrate different students into that, that were in different dorms into the same classes, and so we were able to impact more that way. But then also with the fact that we were really proactive in the way that we were able to reach out to our supervisor, Sergeant Buchanan, and start to really be active in reaching out to our students rather than only getting the requests and then working off just the requests of the students. So because of that, our amazing staff have been able to reach over 170 of the residents within the community center, so that they were able to see if they gauge their interest in school. And from that, our numbers have really grown, and they're going to continue to grow because of it. So speaking of our staff, we have some amazing staff at the CRC. So a couple EAs or Educational Assistance. So up there is Chuck Rungy, just kind of a little piece about him or his statement is the best group of, this is the best group of students he's ever worked with. They come to school because they want to attain a high school diploma or a GED, not because someone told them that they have to. They are stepping away in a way that is not the norm of their peer group. They're courageous young men with a goal in mind. And Lori Bennie, shout out. She's with us today. Not only an amazing member of ours, but also a, going to be us retiring after this. So the work that we do here in Franklin Alternative Youth Program is very rewarding for our students. We are their cheerleaders, their motivators, their community, and their teachers, and she's very grateful for the opportunity. I'm going to let the two gentlemen next to me introduce themselves as we go, but just for their names first, it's Umar Toshib and Isaiah Rembert. So we're going to really talk about our actions now.
So hello, my name is Umar, and I am going to talk about GD testing. So GD is a big component of our program because a lot of students like take GD tests and they pass and graduate. So since COVID, we were, we weren't able to test because of COVID restrictions and other reasons. And because of those reasons, we decided to move the GD program in-house. So during fall 2021, we started exploring to bring GD program to Franklin School. And fall '22, we started GD testing, and since November, we have been, we have had student test in CRC GD tests, and which you'll see in a moment, some of those students who have tested and have been successful. So right now, we have three people from ECC who come and test regularly, and we have had, seen a lot of success and student growth. So it is important because just the success we have seen and how we were able to manage to bring it in-house. And this has, what this has done is that it has removed all the barriers that existed before, because they had just one person who was a tester, and she was a CEO in CRC, and she wasn't available. She couldn't test. So we haven't had any tests since COVID started, but this year, we are, we were able to test a lot of students. So that's, I think, really important, what we have been doing, and we've been doing, we are doing this year, and what we have been able to manage this year. So other thing is review of literacy instruction. So reading is really important, and for our students, just because of the deficit they have in reading. And keeping that in mind, we were exploring many reading options, and we, we looked at standards, and we started exploring, and this literacy program, it's critical literacy, and based off that, we have created lessons for our students. So one of the difficult part is because students aren't with us for a long period of time, so we were looking for something where even if someone is with us for like two weeks, a month, two months, they're able to be successful. So this, this works really well because it's kind of like individualized lessons that aren't like super long. They could be a few days, a week, a few weeks. So we are, we are sort of like at the implementation, implementation stage right now. Now, start of the summer school, we'll go ahead and start that. So those are the two things which we have really worked on this year. Just like students in like a regular school, I think it's important to highlight these two things because they do make huge difference in our students' lives. Thank you.
Good evening. So my name is Isaiah Rembert, and I too am a teacher at the Franklin Alternative Youth Program. And also, as you may know, I'm new to the district, and I'm delighted to have this opportunity to let you guys know about the great work that we're doing at CRC. So first, I'd like to provide you with a snapshot of our student population and our outreach efforts. So right now, our students are between the ages of 18 and 21 years old, and so none of them are legally compelled to attend school. Instead, every student learning with us is choosing to take time for their education, which makes a huge difference. We actively reach out to everyone at these ages who may not already have a high school diploma to see if they would be interested in attending a school with us. Secondly, it's not uncommon for our students to arrive at our doors with significant academic deficits, and often feeling alienated, alienated from school. So our ability to support them academically is contingent upon our capacity to forge strong, caring, and authentic relationships. So the Check and Connect program has played an instrumental role in this effort. If you don't know, Check and Connect is an intervention for students who exhibit signs of disengagement with school and are at risk of dropping out. And at the core of Check and Connect is a trusting relationship between the students and a caring, trained mentor, who both advocate and challenge the student to keep education relevant. So our efforts have focused on addressing the following risk factors: poor attendance, behavioral issues, and/or low grades, and attendance is our primary concern. But I happy to report that this intervention has already had a positive impact on student attendance, leading to further academic engagement and success. And so this work not only fosters academic growth, it also supports community or successful community reentry, and may even reduce recidivism rates, because research has shown that students who engage in education while they're incarcerated are less likely to be reincarcerated. That's huge. Lastly, it's no secret that students with IEPs often struggle with the transition from adolescence to adulthood. Not only are they more likely to struggle in college or similar post-secondary education or training program, they may also have greater difficulty obtaining and maintaining gainful employment. These difficulties are even felt more acutely by our special education students. Right now, our special education population is about 40%, and my understanding is typically it's about, you know, 40 to 50%, sometimes even higher. And so that's complicated, obviously, by the virtue of their status as, when they get out, formerly incarcerated people. So for this reason, we've placed greater emphasis on the importance of student voice and the post-secondary transition planning or PTP process, and all the development of key social skills needed for successful transition. So we have, for example, dedicated the first 15 or 10, 15 minutes of each class to social, emotional learning and the exploration of contemporary issues.
Thank you. So through these different actions, we've really been able to impact our students. And the best way we show impact, like, well, you'll see numbers on another slide, but really, hearing from them, I think, is one of the biggest pieces. We wanted to bring some of their voice to you today. So if you just want to even take a moment for this one, in terms of how they feel just about school in general. And within this, the piece that really stands out to me, all of it is wonderful, but really the student wants to recognize not only are they giving gratitude for everyone and their support, but that they are becoming a brighter thinker and better person. I can't think of a better way that aligns with our vision. We are very, very proud of the fact that our students are able to identify that that's their key takeaway, that they are brighter thinkers and better people. And so for the numbers, though, because they're exciting, too. So when we think about our GED facility that we're able to have, we're able to access even our readiness tests. So we can see the growth in the amount of readiness tests that students are able to access and take this year compared to last. And then thinking about just our access in general, we've been able to have 17 tests passed, and we have a GED graduate this year, which is a really big success. It was a great moment to see. With that as well, we've been able to celebrate some huge successes in our Franklin Public School diplomas. We have seven right now, and we get to celebrate that last one tomorrow at our monthly celebration. So a really big piece of this is that our students do feel like they graduate. They do it. They've got it. Because right now, every month then, we bring together members of our, our school system, and we're able to celebrate them in a way that they get to put on that cap and gown. They get to walk across our stage. They get to have an excitement where other students get to see that success, feel it, get to know that that could be them one day, too. And it really is such a powerful moment. So every month, we're able to do that. And also, just to keep, you know, celebrating all of the moments on the way to that success, there's also a Student of the Month that's recognized every time. And so some of those parameters have been around attendance and engagement, but also positivity, what we can do to bring that positive school culture and environment, which is so important for our students. And so again, when we think about those numbers, like, think about the people behind them. This is one of our diploma student, our first graduate, actually, of this school year. And so we're going to put some voice behind what that gentleman has to say.
I think you guys can go ahead and like read it. I'll just like say, like Claire said, one of our earlier graduates, and really, he put in hard work, and like, his message shows, you know, he, he, you know, what it means to him, and he's kind of like showing like, like a lesson and a message for other students who could also be successful. I think he came with around 17, 18 credits, and he was a student last year as well, but because of COVID, his dorm was in, was in restriction, but this year, he was able to see a lot more success and able to graduate. Thank you.
And then this is our GED graduate as well.
You know, and again, as Mr. Toshib said, you guys can, can go ahead and read that. But this, I can tell you, is the most impressive and most fun and rewarding part of the job, is seeing those students, again, many of whom are reluctant learners, who have not necessarily had the best educational experience, and they tell us all the time that they really do appreciate the opportunities that we provide to them, that they do have smaller class sizes, that they do have people who are, they're in a small enough place where people can actually care about them and get to know them as individuals. And that, that is huge. That's absolutely huge. So we're very proud of that, and that is the, I think, the biggest impetus for this work.
And so ultimately, we'd love to welcome any questions, but really hope that we've been able to capture the students that were really impacting in such a positive way from this experience. Thank you.
Please.
I just sort of say, I'm so proud of you, and I want to give you my thanks, which pales into comparison. I mean, it's a drop in the bucket. My thanks is fairly insubstantial when you get to see accolades like that. So, good job.
I can see how moved, especially you two are, by the work that's been done, and when these, when these kids get their diplomas. So it's really appreciated. I'm wondering if the Department of Corrections talks with us, with Franklin School District, and shares in our work in order to forward, because this isn't the only one of these, of these facilities. I'm wondering if, if the Department of Corrections or the DPI wonders how we're doing, and if, if we're doing better than other places, or if we share the work with others.
Yeah, I can answer a bit of that. So for example, when we think about our partnership with the staff within the CRC, it's really critical. So we really partner with our Sergeant, Sergeant Buchanan, and other individuals throughout the program. But ultimately, because of our partnership with her, we bring her into our meetings, we make sure we're collaborating with her, and in that, we've been able to move ourselves forward in order to gain more access to our students, be able to give them more opportunities beyond what they have. So that partnership has been critical. In terms of like DPI and that partnership, I know that Dr. Mao has been in Communications monthly to make sure that we're really all like aligned and working to move that work forward with other similar programs and similar situations.
So for example, for like GD, you can like go online and like look by site. So for example, how CRC in Franklin is doing compared to some other jailer prison. That part you can look up, but.
Okay. Thank you.
My question is, the students who are kind of given this chance, and they are excelling, you know, is there a way where the FPS education system is give, able to give input to the Department of Corrections that, hey, you know, they came with this, but we gave them a platform, and they're succeeding, and I know that Department of Corrections takes into account, you know, for example, early release, especially the students are motivated, graduating, who have put in their hard work, being in the toughest of circumstances, and able to overcome all the emotional and psychological, you know, stigma attached to another baggage they have, able to succeed. Is there a way where we send a report about their behavior and achievements, which can be taken into account, into substantially their possible decision-making?
We do write like a letter. So if a student is doing well, or is about to graduate, or is, is going to grad, or has been graduated, or has graduated, we write a letter to the judge, and they're able to show their success. So all we can do is like highlight their work, just academic stuff and behavior. So I don't know, like, I think it does make a difference, so they're aware, you know. So in that way, I think that that is kind of the only sort of recommendation or like contact.
I think it does play a role, because you're writing a letter, because, you know, for a judge sitting in the courtroom, he doesn't know what changes have been done, and you guys are there on the ground, seeing the achievements and the day-to-day changes. I'm sure that can, if anybody, you know, will take that. So thank you for doing that. Thank you.
I was just going to say, thank you for sharing those, you know, sharing your students with us. We can go visit other schools in our district. Obviously, we're not allowed to go and visit you and see you and your students. So thank you for bringing a little piece of it here, so we can share in that excitement with you.
Do you feel like you have the supplies, the technology access to as much as you need? I know books. Do you have like hardcover books? Could you use more hardcover books? You know, is there a way for the community to engage with you and make sure we're maximizing their opportunities?
Yeah, I mean, I would say that's, that's complicated. In that, you know, for example, the hardcover book question, I know that we are barred from letting the students take hardcore books back to their cell. I can also tell you that all of our students, no matter what the reading level, have become really into reading, you know. It's been awesome to see that. They're very passionate about it, right? So we do have somebody from the community donate books. So that sort of thing, I think, is absolutely something we can do. Hardcore books unfortunately are, are no-go. And we do try to the best of our capacity to, to embed technology into our programming, but unfortunately, because of the rule that we have from CDC, that's very, very limited. But we do do that, but it's quite limited just because we want to limit the amount of outside contact that they have, for example, through social media. But in terms of books and supplies, I think we do pretty well.
Yeah, we have an opportunity to, to have the funding needed in order to support our students in all ways. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to community comment. Participants under this agenda item must be residents of the Franklin Public School District or parents, guardians of Franklin Public School District. Students must state for the record their full name and address, and must limit their statements to three minutes, with a maximum of 15 minutes for any and all comment, although I suspect we may go over that tonight. There's a few more names. If it's okay with the board, we'll go a little bit over that. But please try and, please try and hold it to three minutes, if you can. If the community comment is related to an agenda item, the board may respond to that comment either at the end of the community comment session or during the discussion of the agenda item. The board may not discuss a comment or question that does not relate to an agenda item per board policy, Administrative Rules 8300. Gerald Young, please. You're the first person.
Good evening. My name is Gerald Young. I live at 7357 South Tifton Drive in Franklin, and a member of this community for over 40 years. I come before you here tonight to notify you of an issue that is happening just outside the school's front door, on school property, in plain sight for everyone to see from a distance. I'm here to let you know how disrespectful the schools are in handling, displaying, and flying of the United States of America flag. On April 17th, 2023, while in the student pickup line at Pleasant View School, I noticed that the bottom rope that attaches the bottom of the flag to the pole was incorrectly installed, and the flag was pulling at least five to six feet away from, from the pole due to the wind. I sent an email via my cellphone to the school principal at approximately 2:00 PM reporting the flag issue. My email was responded to the following midday afternoon saying, "Thank you for bringing this to our attention. We will get it addressed." Tuesday came and gone. Wednesday came and gone. Thursday, at 1:50 PM, four days after the initial notification was made to the principal, the flag was still not repaired. I walked into the school and talked to the personnel at the front desk. I was told that they made out a work order requisition and sent it to the maintenance to get it fixed. I explained to them that the only thing that needed to be fixed was that the flag needed to be lowered down the pole, and the bottom rope needed to be secured around the flag pole, and then reattached to the flag. I also told them that this did not take a work order in order to get this action done. I volunteered my help and services to hang the flag correctly right then and I volunteered my help and services to hang the flag correctly right then and there, but it fell on deaf ears. I followed up my front office visit immediately with a second email to the principal of Pleasant View with my disbelief that after four days, this issue was still not fixed. I explained that I offered my services to properly hang the United States of America flag, and that the front desk, what I was just ignored. The flag was finally fixed and hanging correctly on Friday, April 21st, five days later. I never did receive a response from my second email from the principal. Let's fast forward to Friday, May 12th, 2023. I drove by Pleasant View School and the high school at 8:50 AM on Friday, May 12th. I was in disbelief as the American flags were not at half-staff, as the governor had issued Executive Order 199, directing flags to be flown at half-staff, sunrise to sunset, for one day, for the line of duty death of Sheriff Deputy Leasing. She was the fourth line of duty death law enforcement officer in the state of Wisconsin since January 1st of 2023. I placed the call to the school district office at 8:50 AM on Friday, May 12th, and shared my disbelief that the schools, public buildings, are not following the governor's executive order of lowering the American flags to half-staff in honor of the fallen deputy. The person I talked to on the phone told me, "Thank you for bringing this to our attention. We'll send out an email to all the schools to address this issue." It was like nobody ever heard that they were supposed to fly the American flags at half-staff for the fallen deputy for the day. Eventually, the flags were lowered to around half-staff at 10:40 AM. What even makes this worse is the flags were ordered to be returned to full staff by the governor's executive order 199 at sunset on Friday, May 12th, 2023. But this was not done until Tuesday, May 16th, on or about 8:20 AM. Eighty-four plus hours passed the governor's executive order to raise the flags to full staff. I mentioned earlier that there have been four law enforcement line of death duties in the state of Wisconsin since January 1st, 2023. I personally attended the funeral in Milwaukee on February 13th for Police Officer Jervin, that gave his life while on duty, and cannot say with 100% certainty if the flags were lowered to half-staff as ordered by the governor's under Executive Order Number 185 for his line of duty sacrifice. The funeral services for the second and third line of duty deaths for Officers Reinhardt and Schiel, that gave their lives, were held together on Saturday, April 15th, 2023. And for that funeral, I can tell you with 100% certainty that the flags were not lowered to half-staff from sunrise to sunset on school property, as ordered by the governor under Executive Order 192 and 193, directing flags to half-staff for the day of their funeral. Without my call to the school district at 8:50 AM on Friday, May 12th, I am positive none of the flags would have been lowered to half-staff to honor the life and bravery of the law enforcement officer that gave her life defending and protecting all of us. The Franklin School District receives state funding and must follow the governor's executive orders when issued. It appears there is no flag policy or procedure in place at any of the schools in the school district of Franklin, Wisconsin, who maintains the flags on holidays, weekends, and during summer break. Proper flag display and handling procedures can be found at vfw.org/community-flag-etiquette. Links takes you to the official U.S. Flag Code Public Law 94-344 and 94-345 that covers proper flag handling and display rules set forth by the United States government. Furthermore, state of Wisconsin flag protocols can be found online at Wisconsin State Law Library, that's WILawLibrary.gov/topics/etiquette.php. I am requesting that you place this flag item on your next meeting agenda and take quick action to get the flag policy and procedures in place at all Franklin Public School locations in the school district to correct this behavior. The schools, the districts, and this board can have all the cliches they want about "blue lies matter" and "we support blue", but right now, your actions are speaking much louder than your words. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Sneed, please.
Hello, everybody. I think most of you know me. I do come with more of a passionate heart than anything else. So my name is Patricia Sneed. I am a Countrydale teacher. I have been teaching for 33 years. I have been in Franklin for 27 years. Do you need my address? I don't live in Franklin, but I'm a Franklin teacher. Do you want my address? Whoever it goes to. I guess not. Okay.
It's on the paper. We're fine.
You're fine. We have. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. I would first of all like to start by saying thank you to so many of you. Andy, thank you for listening to our conversation. Laura, you were part of that also. Thank you very much. I really want to thank you, Mike, for sitting down and having a conversation with me. As a union member and a union board member, I am trying really hard, and we all, part of the union, we are trying really hard to have a conversation and try and have a good working relationship. We want to change some of the things that have happened. We really want to make it positive. I also want to thank you, Bob. I've told you this time and time again, you are a breath of fresh air, at least from the elementary school. And I can't thank you enough for some of the changes that you have done. Maybe I won't be so happy later, but I'm thanking you right now. I'm really excited with some of the things that are happening. Annalee, thank you for coming over from Oak Creek. My kids go to Oak Creek, so I had to throw it in there. But the main reason why I'm here is to just share with you, we have an urgency. We have a major problem. We have a huge concern here as teachers, as parents. And the big problem is that we are, as teachers, we are not getting a cost of living adjustment. We are not getting what we deserve. We have, we probably have all seen in the newspaper. So Wawa Tosa gives 12% to their teachers. 12%. And I think to myself, are we not worth that? Okay, fine. MPS. Last year, 7%. This year, it's going to be 8%. And those are just some of the numbers that we know. Everyone, I love being in Franklin. That's why I haven't left. That's why I've been here for 27 years. There are some amazing things happened. But I have talked with some of the school board members, some of you last year, helping you to understand that I feel as though we are trying to ride on our coattails of what Franklin used to be. And yes, I am saying "used to be", because we're not there right now. Franklin is not a place that necessarily people want to come to. A coworker of mine, she couldn't wait and was so excited to be in Franklin. And now that she's here, she's like, gosh, it's not what I thought it would be. That breaks my heart. I know a teacher, I told Laura, Southwood Glen teacher. She's a fifth-grade teacher. She's amazing. Sunny. She's planning on leaving. She's been here for a couple of years. She's going to Fox Point Bayside. $6,000 more, and they have a salary schedule. We need a salary schedule. We need to do, we need to know, what do we have to do in order to improve and to get more money? Annalee, I think I heard, and it could be second person, but I heard that at one point you had said, "Well, teachers aren't in it for the money." We're not. We love teaching. We love what we do. And I could be wrong. I'm just telling you what I've heard. But we need to pay our bills. We need to be able to say that Franklin is a great place to come to. And I'm struggling to say that now, and I hate saying that. I'm still here because I love it. And I will continue to stay here, and I will continue to fight for how great of this place it is. But it's got to turn around. And you guys can truly make the difference. I do have for you over 220 signatures from teachers, basically telling you that same thing. There is information on the other side that specifically states what it is that they have shared and why we signed it. And obviously, we have a small turnout in comparison to these 220 names. And that's only a small amount of names, because more people, I couldn't get to everybody, and other teachers couldn't as well. Let's make Franklin great again. Thank you.
Kristen Stanley, please.
I don't think they could hear.
I'm sorry. Kristen Stanley, please.
Hi, thanks. Hello, board. I know some of you. Hello, hello. Do I need to put this in front of me? There we go. Good evening. My name is Kristen Stanley. My address is 10728 South 92nd Street. May marks seven years that our family has lived in Franklin, Wisconsin. We moved here from Hawaii, so, which is ranked probably number one in tropical beauty and warm weather. But according to the 2023 U.S. News State Rankings, it's number 24 in education. Wisconsin is ranked number six. So when people question our sanity for moving here to Wisconsin, the first thing my husband and I mention is how impressed we are with the school system here. We appreciate that Wisconsinites value prioritize and fund education. I was employed when we started looking for a house to relocate to our new assignment at the military base in Milwaukee. And my husband, who's over there, was tasked for doing the research for buying a house. And he made the quality of the community schools our top consideration for when we relocated. And I remember Franklin Schools' ratings on the real estate website were superior. Since then, we've had one graduate from the high school here, one through middle school now, and one is finishing up at the elementary school this year. During the pandemic, I resigned from my full-time civil service position to stay home with my virtual learners, and we opted to keep them out of the schools during that hybrid year. So I can say I have a much fond appreciation for what teachers do, and I feel very strongly that they are deserving of a professional salary scale. I work in a hospital now, and I'm not a medic, but I do know that quick clot will stop the bleed. And we cannot afford to hemorrhage talent from our education system here. We have to offer attractive compensation benefits to our teachers. Bonuses are great, but we all know that you can't budget on a bonus. Performance-based incentives can motivate high-performing employees, but that requires a significant amount of additional effort to evaluate and distribute fairly. Longevity awards could help retain institutional knowledge here. And certainly, salary increases, COLA, and funding for advanced degrees and certifications would be attractive. And here's something that struck me as strange. We had a holiday get-together in December. I had four teachers at my party. They're Franklin residents. None of them work in the Franklin School District. And I wonder, why is that? Is it because they don't see an equal investment from Franklin? Can they bank their financial future on a plan without salary predictability? Can they trust a district that doesn't reward loyalty or effort? It's great that the school board is considering or planning to develop a new system for our salary advancement, but we just implore you to do it with the same rate of speed that our cost of living is increasing by, and that is rapidly. So thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today and for your commitment to prioritizing education in Franklin. Teachers truly are the most powerful factor in preparing our next generation, and we have to invest in that now. And I think that a strong school system will attract new residents to this community, and they might even be from Hawaii.
Mary Carol LeWitt, please. Mary, sorry.
I am really going deaf. Hello. I get nervous every time I talk to you, even though at one time I was a member of your board, or of the board. But right now, I'm a proud staff member, support staff member at Pleasant View Elementary. And I've been there, I'm not sure, eight years? I forget. But it was a learning curve for me, because before, I was a member at the high school. I was a staff member there, and I loved it, because it was very partitioned. I had English classes, and I had science classes, and sometimes I had math classes, and I had shop classes. But it was not like an elementary school, because in elementary school, you do everything. And we have support staff members who do everything. And they do wonders with the children in our school. And we have a wonderful new principal, whom I love dearly. And we all support each other. We know what's expected. They ask us to do something. We're all willing to chip in wherever and whenever needed. And in fact, when I was a board member, we tried to work with the union as well. Debbie, you probably remember that. You might even have this shirt.
I do have that shirt. I wasn't going to say that, though.
So I am hoping that you will work with us, because we want to work with you. We are all in this together. We are all part of this community. And people are building million-dollar houses in our community. I would expect that they would expect, like Kristen from Hawaii, that we have a million-dollar or better school system. And we have people who want to stay here and remain here and make this a stable school system. And children will learn if they know that they can count on seeing Mrs. So-and-so, Mrs. Kay, in my case, next year or the year after. And I'm just a support staff member. But we have educational assistants, we have office assistants, we have secretaries, we have information, technology, literacy, education assistants. And they do wonders in the libraries, oh. Since we only have one librarian for the whole district, they are awesome. And not only do they do that, but they also are outside on the playground with me, and they are at the parent pickup with me, or at school drop-off in the mornings. We cover a whole bunch of different duties. And I know that there have been many, many educational assistants who have been here for many years, who have left to retirement, but also who have left because things have gotten away from what it used to be. And granted, I think that children today are exposed to so many more things than when my children were in school. And I graduated four of them. And I stayed home with them. But I have loved this job. I've grown into it, I think. And I try to do the very best I can, and I try to bring that love and support for those students, because they are our fortune and our future. And one day, one of those students is going to be taking care of me when I can't take care of myself anymore. So I better take care of them now. And I try really hard to do that, the best I can. Am I always successful? Not the way I might want to be, but hopefully, the student realizes I am trying my best, just as I expect those students to try their best. And I love my job. I love my kids. But, please, I'm going to get dramatic.
Oh, boy. Goodness. Mary. Okay, Mary.
Please stanch the bleeding. We can't afford to lose more people, because they are going to districts that are offering $2 and $3 more an hour, my support staff now I'm talking about, $2 and $3 an hour more. They get benefits. They get more hours. We need to find a system for our group, as well as the teachers' group, to provide equitable and competitive salaries. And a schedule. I'm on step two. I've been on step two since 2010. Had I been on step four, maybe I would be earning more than $20.05 an hour, which is a lot of money. I will admit, it is money. But I've been in the school district since the year 2000, technically with my board service. But please, provide a COLA that we can live with, because there are so many people I know personally who have had life-changing circumstances, and they need full-time work, or they need benefits that they can't get here. And when you're told, "Well, then just go find another job somewhere", that hurts, especially if you've been in the district for a long time. And we need that purchasing power. We're losing money. Not only us, but the teachers as well. They lost 1,325... They lost $1,325 last year with what they received. In over 10 years, that's over $13,000. So if we want to truly make this a better place to work, we have to help all of us. And if we do that, then we will be a part of a better community. And our children will be more satisfied and happy to learn with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Nicole Salowitz, please.
Did you see Nicole?
Yes.
I'm going to change gears a little bit. My name's Nicole Salowitz. My address is 8248 South Shadwell Circle. I'm a mom of two at Countrydale. And today, I know the snack policy is up for a new review, and I'd like to speak on that, particularly the snack policy in the elementary and middle schools. I feel that it is too restrictive, and it's not sending a healthy message to our kids. The way it is today, the kids choose from only eight allowable food types. There's no explanation of how these food types were selected. It implies that the foods not on the list are unhealthy, and it's giving the wrong message to the kids. In my own family, we have a family history of eating disorders. If you look at the Mayo Clinic website, one of the red flags of an eating disorder is having a very limited diet that hasn't been prescribed by a trained medical professional. So this red flag that's described, that's basically describing the snack policy. No one's consulted. My kid's pediatrician. And the list is definitely limited. A healthy diet is going to vary from person to person. So for me personally, my cardiologist prescribed me to increase my salt intake, even though all her other patients, you know, she tells them to decrease it. So there is no one-size-fits-all approach to nutrition. It's going to vary from person to person. And I feel it's reckless, actually, for the school to promote this list and promote this diet and force it on our families. By having such a restricted list, it's actually discouraging my kids from getting a balanced diet. When I left to come here today, my son was happily having his vegetables. And he takes them, and he dips them in ranch dressing, and he eats them all. But at school, he's not allowed the ranch dressing. So the number of times he's brought vegetables to school is zero. Instead, he's bringing the same yogurt every day, because that's the only thing that he wants to choose off the list. You know, and I've discussed this with the school principal, and she said, you know, "It's only one meal of the day. You know, it's not a big deal. They can bring what they want for lunch." But my concern is that this is a choice that the kids are making, and they don't have autonomy over what they put in their bodies. They are given a very restrictive list. Certain foods are deemed as healthy or not healthy without any rationale. And when my daughter started kindergarten, she was really excited. She had her lunchbox. She was excited to pick out her snack. She'd go into the pantry, and time and time again, she'd pick something, and I'd have to tell her, "No, that's not allowed." And she'd ask why, and I didn't have a good answer for her. It wasn't explained in the policy how this list, you know, came up. And this is really a decision that should be made up to the kids and their parents. This isn't a school district decision. Now, I understand that there's concerns about severe nut allergies in the school. In fact, the wellness policy says that the high school strives to be nut-free. But in the elementary schools, this isn't communicated to families. They don't actually tell us to keep nuts out of the classroom. They give us a limited list. But I've seen raisin boxes that can have trace amounts of nuts. I know we're talking about adding, you know, pretzel and popcorn brands. Those can also have amounts of nuts. Like, this needs to actually be communicated to the families. If you're trying to keep the classrooms nut-free, you need to tell us that. So the restricted snack list alone, that's actually insufficient to keep the kids with the nut allergies free, to keep the kids with the nut allergies safe. So in conclusion, I feel that the district's policy is overly restrictive. The permitted diet doesn't necessarily meet the nutritional needs of our kids. And the policy doesn't seem to achieve the district's goal of keeping kids healthy and safe. Rather than listing a small list of permitted foods, which is insufficient to meet their nutritional requirements, it would be better to list which foods are restricted, such as nuts, and explain why. The elementary and middle schools could adopt the same policy as the high school and simply ask the families not to bring the nuts. It would ensure that our younger children are getting a wide variety of foods. It would improve their mental relationship with food, and it would be safer for the children with the nut allergies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lewis Brown, please. Sorry, coach.
I think I know all of you, but for the record, Louis Brown, 5535 West Allwood Drive. Thanks for allowing me to speak. This is my 31st year in Franklin, my first 20 years here. Many teachers were excited to become a part of our district and stayed for years. And the big reason was they knew where they stood and where they were going. Knowing where you stand and where you can go in this career helps to foster loyalty. Loyalty by a teaching staff allows for great experiences for our students, and that is ultimately why I hope everyone is in this room. Many ask me, "Why are you so loyal all these years?" I've been asked to go teach and coach at Arrowhead, Brookfield Central, and several other districts in the last 10 years. I raised my family here, and I'm invested in this community and what it stands for. You know, I'm loyal, but I'm also the exception now. Things have changed. What I am saying now is not for my personal benefit. I realize I'm probably on my way out the next few years. It is for our students' benefit. I see the quality of teaching diminishing, and many are not as loyal as they could be. But I cannot blame them. My department members will never earn what I earn, which is sad. Perception is also an issue. Many in our community think our district is way better than what really happens. A couple of examples have already been, you know, brought up revolving EAs, the percentage of teachers leaving, especially in the last couple of years. And many of us teachers are subbing three, four times a week during our prep periods. Anyway, speaking of perception, I want to give you a snapshot. I'll use this as an example of what's perceived, but not really known as it pertains to our football program. You all know I'm the head football coach. I would assume many of you have been to a football game on Friday night. And if you didn't, go. You're in for a ride. If so, most of you guys can appreciate all that goes into Friday nights. Do you understand when you look at what's on the field, a lot went into that product that makes our community great? Perception is a great experience and great support. Here's the reality. Do you know that the uniforms we wear cost between $38,000 and $43,000? Our district gives us $4,500 every four years. Do you know that almost everything on the sidelines is paid for, not by our district, but by our Gridiron Club, which raises $70,000 a year? Water coolers, ball bags, kicking nets, headphones, coaching gear, half the helmets and shoulder pads. Do you know that the coaching staff in front of you, including myself, is the lowest-paid staff in the conference, and it's not close? Do you know that those kids have been trampling over each other in a tiny weight room for years and have one of the worst locker rooms in the state? In 10 years, we save our district $700,000. And I have been turned down every time but once when asking for another coach that makes $1,800. This is one small example of how we are perceived as second to none and really get very little support financially from our district. And I realize we're an expensive sport. That's why we have a Gridiron Club. But I would say that we probably spend a lot more percent-wise than most of the districts in the state out of our Gridiron Club versus the district. Many are finally figuring out what's real and leaving or not coming here. And our kids are the ones who ultimately will suffer. Higher-ups need to make big decisions on where our money is spent. I know I'm out of time, but I have many great ideas that might help if you ever want to listen. Thanks.
We have one last commenter tonight, and he is Mayor John Nelson. Please come up. Mr. Nelson is the first Franklin High graduate to be mayor of Franklin. And welcome, Mr. Nelson.
Well, thank you. Took my thunder. Now I'm going to go back to my chair, because that's all I was going to say. And, Coach, thanks, because what you brought to this program, we did not have anywhere near, the team you brought forth. And I was walking in here tonight with Ken Huber, who came to the school when I was a sophomore in high school. So that made me feel good, too. But on a serious note, yes, I have been a lifelong resident of our fine city, and I was very honored to be able to win in April. I've been an alderman for six years. One of the things that I've noticed over my time as an alder was there's a little bit of a contentious relationship between, peripherally between the electeds on the alder side, city side, as well as the school board. So I'm here tonight to try to put out that olive branch a little bit and say that there's things that we can work together on, things to make our community better on. I mean, tonight, it's great when you see this type of response, this type of attendance, to come together means people care. So it means people are vested. They want to be here. They want to see good things happen for our community, and that's why I ran. And when you bring up that point that I am the first Franklin alum to ever become mayor, that adds another level of perhaps stress or a level of accountability and expectation. And, okay, so you're the first one. You're the 13th mayor ever, but you're the first Franklin alum of, I guess, Countrydale, if we're going to look at the whole thing. So Countrydale and, of course, the old Forest Park. But, yeah, it was great to grow up here. I feel very blessed to have had this opportunity. And I love the community, and I want to see us prosper. And I want to see us take care of our own. I don't want to see teachers leave and everything. I mean, I know there's a cost to everything. We're dealing with it, getting into our budgets. We're going to be starting after Memorial Day to start looking at our first budget. With me tonight also is Mrs. Kelly Hirsch. She is our new Director of Administration for our city. Kelly Hirsch. Her family, Franklin residents, four children in the education system. So, I mean, she's also a vested member of our community. And so I'm just looking at trying to bring together and maybe bridge some things that we can all work together on. And I'm open to, you know, the door's open. I mean, there's some of you on this board that I've known for a long time and have been supporters and worked with me during my campaign. And I'm hoping that we can continue a very positive relationship and, you know, move the city forward as a whole and not have this dividing line between the two. So, well, thank you.
Thank you. And I know there's always, you always hear about a dividing line. And I'm not sure why imaginary dividing line divides us. So it doesn't, is the answer, and we need to move forward together, and I know we will. So thank you for that olive branch, and we'll take it and extend it back to you.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right, item seven, consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion is made by Mrs. Sapursky, seconded by Mrs. Wacowsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. School Board calendar, there's a regular Board of Education meeting June 21st, 2023, at the ECC at 6:00. And a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, July 12th, at the ECC, also at 6:00. District Administrator update, Mrs. Bennen, please.
All right. So I wanted to thank the educators that were here tonight to speak with us. I know that many are leaving the room, but we are working and want to work together and excited for the task force that we're putting together for next year. So thank you for being with us. Exciting news tonight is that we have Rachel Jean with us, who you just approved in the consent agenda. She's going to be the new principal of Countrydale Elementary School. So she went through a test.
Did you hear all the Countrydale enthusiasm here?
And then the mayor went through Countrydale? I had no idea. It's all right now. So, there we go. But we're excited to have her here. She went through a quite rigorous process, interview process with the team, with parents, educators from the building. And since you're here, her husband Wes is also with us, and she has a three-year-old, but thought that this might not be the most entertaining venue for her this evening. So thank you for joining our team, and we're really looking forward to it.
Thank you. I can't wait.
Excellent. I also like to thank Mayor John Nelson for being here. So we haven't gotten officially meet. I'm really looking forward to working together as a board, as our whole system, to continue to grow the community and grow the pride that's here and everything that we can do together. So it's nice to meet you, and we'll follow up and get together more regularly. It was also exciting this evening to have Megan Conway with us, the volition and the city and their tobacco poster. But that's just another relationship that we continue to grow a partnership with, with the school district. So I've enjoyed, just in my first year in the district, working with them on their goal-setting, their feedback from the community, and how we're moving forward together. And it's great that we have these interactions with the students where they can start to see those partnerships, too. The Community Reintegration Center, I think they did a wonderful job tonight. But what I've learned in a year of being able to go there and visit, like tomorrow for graduation, is that the programming we're doing to offer them education before they're released, without knowing those timelines always and a lot of advancement, has really made a difference. I don't know, because I didn't know this coming in, that those students have to choose to come there every day. Like, they said 18 to 21, they have to choose. They don't have to be there. That's real. So those educators have not only done a tremendous job of working with Sergeant Buchanan, with Claire Bastian's leadership, to be able to get to the dorms more, to just talk about what they do, but more and more students have come in to earn that. You saw 170 students just this year. So I think that's really something. That's not just helping our community, but many of them are released and go back to communities all over the greater Milwaukee area. So we're really making a bigger impact. Let's see. We, I would like to thank Andy Thompson. We had our business partner lunch yesterday. Most of our board members were there, but it was really to thank every business that we're working with and try to cultivate more names of businesses we can work with, to partner our students for youth apprenticeships, community relations, and just a variety of different ways to get integrated and get those experiences. There were many learners that were there yesterday, and a lot of us heard them. But they talked about how some of them explored healthcare and maybe decided that wasn't for them, went the business route, or vice versa, or realized there were avenues of businesses in this city that they didn't even know existed. So it was really neat to hear how opening those doors has really opened new experiences for them and their families. Andrew Levin, and I might be saying his last name wrong, so I apologize, put on a great culture fest with the multicultural club last Friday. I saw some of you there. It was great to see the different cultures. There was different dance, food, just exploration throughout the building, free-flowing. There was great attendance. It's the third year of this event. I'm excited to see how it continues to grow. And this is our last board meeting before, like, the school year officially wraps up. So we have a lot of big things coming up. We've had the month-long concert series at the Sabre Center, so that's still going on this week with some Forest Park concerts. We have eighth grade promotion on June 7th. That's right over at Forest Park, 7 o'clock. I know many of you will be there with us when they have a dance afterwards. Actually, tomorrow and Friday, our fifth grade celebrates kind of their transition to middle school. So all five fifth grades from the five buildings come together and do an activity for two days outside of the schools, kind of getting to know their new peer group, which is really exciting. And then, obviously, we have the last day of school on June 8th, and then graduation a couple of weeks later on the 24th at American Family Field to really culminate the adventures and excitement of our learning this year. So thanks for the support through a great, wonderful year, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Item 10, reports, presentations, and other school board business. A district family engagement liaison. This is Katie Kirchner. Welcome.
Thank you. It's nice to meet all of you.
Yeah, so we are really happy to have Katie joining us. I will explain a little bit of what her role is this evening. And I did promise her that she did not have to present anything, so she was good with that. But I don't think she would have any issues communicating and sharing with you in front of us. So Katie will serve as our district family engagement liaison. And this is something that's very specific to special education. She did have to go through a process to be selected and appointed to this role. But she also volunteered for, it's a couple of-year commitment. But I just wanted to share with you a couple of the qualities that we looked for in this process. So a person who serves in this role does need to be a parent of a child with an IEP. She does need to understand, like, some basic knowledge about special education, strong communication skills and interpersonal skills, and really able to build those relationships. communication skills and interpersonal skills, and really able to build those relationships with amongst other families, as well as working with staff. A willingness to promote a collaborative relationship between families and school staff. And then also just understanding, you know, that the importance of that confidentiality and, you know, again, just understanding kind of how to navigate and work with families, you know, oftentimes that are maybe under a different level of stress or need a different level of support because they're trying to navigate that world of what it means to have a student identified with a disability, as well as understanding how to partner with the school, what to expect when you go through this process, and how to advocate and partner with school. So I am really excited about having Katie join us in this role. She's, we met briefly last year. She participated in our school district self-assessment process as a Robinwood family member at that point. And we're just thrilled to have her again. I'm going to just talk one more minute about, again, just some of the aspects of her role as well. So she will be really working with me to develop some family engagement activities, which we've started to talk about, some different ideas with that, and different ways that we can gather some information from families as far as what they would appreciate. Again, promoting those positive relationships, disseminating information. So she's a member of the Wisconsin statewide parent organization. So as a member of that, she has like a, kind of a regional mentor. And then she also has opportunities to meet, I want to say virtually, maybe, was it monthly, I think? Yeah. To even learn about what resources are there and opportunities are there for families to learn together, just through that statewide organization as well. So she'll be, have a lot of great resources for us. Also just someone to be a great problem solver, to be that parent perspective when we're trying to make some overall decisions. And again, that collaboration, I think, is key. So she's still here. She's gone through some training and came back to meet with me again. So we have some initial plans for the fall. I don't know if you wanted to share a little bit about what we talked about for?
Sure.
Yeah, some introductory?
Okay. Well, like she said, I'm Katie. My husband and I have two sons in the Franklin School District. Our oldest is going to be heading to the high school next year, so that will be a new world for all of us. He has a 504 plan for the last several years that's been working well for him. And our youngest will be leaving Robinwood for Forest Park. He has an IEP for autism, ADHD, and a few other little things. So we have been so fortunate to have really positive experiences with all of the teachers and support staff and the whole special education department, both at Robinwood and Forest Park. And so I'm hopeful to be able to help other families that are maybe struggling with this process, which can be kind of overwhelming for everybody, to provide them with some support and information. We talked about providing probably quarterly an educational opportunity for families in person. And then we are going to develop a monthly email to send out that highlights specific resources and different learning opportunities through that statewide organization, a lot of free resources. I am also a pediatric nurse at the Children's Hospital, so I work with a lot of special needs, independent of those that my own children have. And even being immersed in that culture, I was kind of bowled over at the education, at everything that's out there. So we're hopeful that we can identify some of those things that would be a really good resource for parents and let them learn a little bit more about how to help their kids, to be advocates for their kids, help them to have a good experience, and then to be able to come back out into the community. So we're also going to compile some resources to list, hopefully, under the family section of the Franklin School District page, so that those are available at all times, in addition to the monthly email.
So she will be introduced to our entire staff during our back-to-school week. And then she has already, you know, through a letter and a picture, been introduced, but she will have another opportunity to have some face time with staff during that first week. And then also during our open houses, she'll be available and we'll communicate that out with staff as well. So I'm excited about this and especially for those families who attended our community conversations. I know this was really important for them to have someone in this role. So we're excited just to get the ball rolling and we're still working on recruiting a second person. So, because it is a big job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Technology report, Ms. Zalinski, please.
Good evening. I'm Luann Zalinski, the district technology coordinator, and I am going to have two agenda items. I'm going to start with the technology update, which I believe you all have a copy of it in the board agenda. I'm just going to highlight a few things. I'm sure you've all had an opportunity to review the update. Just a little bit of background around technology. My role oversees kind of what I call three aspects of technology, the operations side, the instructional technology side, and I also oversee the library media piece. I wanted to highlight just some of the things that we've been working on this specific year. As we think about some of those technical operational pieces, I'll just highlight a few things that we, those would be things like maintaining some of our equipment, our infrastructure, and some of those software pieces. So sometimes I call that maybe, a lot of it's behind-the-scenes kinds of things that make the network run and things happen. So some of that included replacing some of our major storage for, where file storage and server storages, replacing switches throughout the district, some computer replacements. We also did the replacement of projection units at the high school. You now see the TVs and we'll be working on doing something similar to all the elementary schools this summer. That will be a project that's upcoming. And I'm happy and excited to see the city here tonight because we've also been working in some partnerships with the city for their future fiber connections that they're working on at their buildings, where they're going to be partnering in with some of our infrastructure, as well as for any future needs that we may have. They will have some infrastructure in place for some land that we own on the other side of town, that if we ever decide to build on that, we'll have some connectivity raceways already with that. So excited to see you here and as part of that project. As well as in the instructional technology, so thinking about like how is technology used in the classroom to impact learning. As you know, we've had one-to-one Chromebooks for a while, the Google Suite and some other kind of staple products that we use to help with that student learning component. We did expand one-to-one Chromebooks consistently to our 5K2 population this year. They had access in the past. COVID kind of pushed that, I guess, a little bit, as it did a lot of things, getting more of that in the hands of students. We did some updates of some iPads in our FIAD department. They use heart rate monitors that connect to iPads and students can watch their heart rates go up and down as they're exercising, so that, it's kind of a neat thing to see if you haven't seen that in, happening in our FIAD classes. But students who are very more, much more, what's the word I'm looking for?
Motivated? Engaged? Incentivized?
No, none of those words. But close. I'm going to say more physically fit, where they have to work harder to get their heart rate going, then they can see that personal level of where they're at and how much more they may have to put effort into getting that heart rate raised to where we needed to go. So it's a pretty neat application of software. We've also provided many professional development opportunities this school year, as well as our instructional technology coaches following up with coaching in the classroom, trying to advertise to teachers, or not just advertise. Google is changing pretty frequently. I'm on some listserv as well as our instructional coaches and constantly I'm getting like little chat messages, hey, this cool new feature, I think, could be really beneficial in certain ways. And so trying to keep staff even current on some of those changes by putting things in the Franklin Find, as well as we supported a literacy program that we're piloted this year as a way to perhaps help us with some of the areas in our literacy curriculum.
Can you give an example of what that was like?
Example of which?
The literacy applications.
So I don't want to speak too detailed. Bob really facilitated the, our pilot this year. So we had identified some needs and so we piloted a couple of different products, one at Franklin and one at Southwood Glen for students, that is to help students with their basics in reading and literacy skill sets as it related to literacy. So that was something we piloted this year that we supported in the teaching and learning department. I don't know if you want to say anything more to that, Bob?
I think so.
Yeah. Okay. And then the other area, library media, just talking a few bullet points. We have a very robust library media program. You heard some of the teachers or someone speak earlier tonight, also all about our ITL aides, as well as our library media specialists who help facilitate that program. Jill Poglis is our only certified library media specialist of the district. And then we have support staff in the libraries who support the day-to-day operations of the library, but also are the first point of contact for any Chromebook repairs for students, as well as supporting teachers in their classroom with some technologies as well. Some of the things that we've done this year, continue to increase our eBooks collection. Jill does a great job of selecting those materials and expanding that to give anytime, anywhere access to reading materials. We know with a strong, robust library program, done well, will increase or have a positive impact on our literacy test scores and other pieces. We want books in the hands of kids and want them to be reading. Expanding our, both our digital and our print collection with some of my more diverse collection of characters, settings, kind of just broaden our spectrum of books that we have available in our collection. Our high school team is super excited about getting the New York Times subscription. I know it seems, maybe sound like a small thing, but it's something they really had asked for from a research and background standpoint. And then again, another city connection, always promoting things, good partnership. Jill meets with our teen librarians from the public library on a quarterly basis. So we have that ongoing partnership with the public library. Done some girly, great things over the years with not only just promoting library, public library activities, as well as district activities, but also when there are projects or research papers coming up, we can, the public library knows that those things may be coming and can be able to provide those resources or share what resources they have to complement the resources that we have internal to the district. And I believe that has been a really, a great partnership as well with that. So that is my update. I don't know if you have any questions before I move on to?
Do we have any questions? Great, thank you. Yes, please move on to the library plan.
Okay. So the library plan is on the agenda tonight. As I indicated on the cover sheet, that per state code and legislation, we are required to have an approved library media plan on file. Doesn't have to be turned into the state. It's a, as I say, check the box, but something that we have organized. So that is the purpose for tonight. I do want to just point out, if you've got a chance to look at the picture on the cover of our plan, so that, this is Harper. Harper is a student at Robinwood. And Jill Poglis had selected this picture and I said, tell me a little bit about this picture. I'll be sharing this with the board tonight. And she said, well, this is Harper at Robinwood. And the Robinwood PTO had a raffle during the book fair, and one of the raffle items was to become the librarian for the day. And Harper, that is one of her career goals, and she put all of her tickets in to become librarian for the day. So that's Harper and her story of why she is reading to some students in the Robinwood library. So it's kind of a fun little story there. So in the document, I'm not going to read all of that, but there's a lot of background knowledge about our current state in terms of the library, both in terms of staffing, how it operates, our collaboration with teaching and learning. Again, the collaboration with the public library, as I've already mentioned, talks a little bit about funding and gives us some statistics around our current collections in our library, the circulation numbers that you see both in terms of print books, as well as the eBooks, and so forth. In addition to that, just a summary of some of the library skills that we still teach students in the elementary school as they come in and select books, but also just how to navigate the library, where to find things, how to find books at their right reading level, find things in their interest level, those types of skills. And those skills also get embedded throughout beyond elementary school, as well as they're doing more sophisticated research projects and using the library for learning. So following that, there are lots of different databases. And so when we talk about literacy and library literacy skills for students, while I know it's a really good, it's a quick habit to jump to Google and just do a quick Google search, it probably isn't our best choice for students when we're trying to, if you think about what we want students to have, facts and information that has been vetted and so forth. So you'll see lots of the different databases electronically that we have available for students to have access to, both at school and at home. So when we talk about research, we try to guide students and teachers into using those vetted resources first and maybe Google as a secondary, or maybe not at all, as we're teaching them some of those literacy skills.
How do those databases compare to what's available at the public library?
I don't have that comparison.
Because, I mean, once you're out of school, you wouldn't really have access to these.
Yeah, there are some crossovers, for sure, I know, but I don't know exactly which ones are available through the public library versus not.
Another question I have is, as far as, you know, skills and using the library, what about use of audiobooks? Do they teach kids how to, I mean, is that legit? Use an audiobook instead of reading it? Is there value in that? Do you track any stats on?
I don't have any stats on audiobooks. I believe as part of our eBook collection, there are audiobooks as well that is available to students, but I don't have any specific data in terms of that circulation.
Looking at the graph, you know, for circulation statistics, of course, I see that the eBooks were more in circulation in 2020, 2021, as compared to last year. And of course, this data for 2022, 2023 is incomplete, because I think it's as of first of March. But do we know why there is less of, is this the eBook circulation, less because the students are more in school now, as compared to, you know?
Yeah.
COVID going away and then the physical book itself, the circulation, I think, you know, it's slightly kind of, you know, still low for this current year. I'm hoping that it'll pick up, but looking at the three-year circulation of the hardcover books, you know, it still seems that it's low as compared to last year.
Yeah, so the, just two things, I guess. The data was pulled as of March, so we don't have quite a full year in terms of this year's circulation data. And I think your theory is valid. I think during the COVID times, we saw an increase in eBooks being accessed than maybe we are currently seeing. In terms of that overall trend, you know, that would be something, we don't have any concrete data as to why that would be, you know, what books, in terms of why books would be more circulated, let's say, previous years than current years.
Can I just make a comment real quick? I've been working in the library when my student isn't present, and the librarians, or I should say the education assistants there, for every class that comes in, they have told them about SORA, which is the ability for them to access eBooks over the summer months. And they also mentioned that the students and their families should go to the Franklin Public Library or any public library over the summer to keep up their reading skills. So I do know that they, that they are telling the students, they have access, they get a sheet explaining how to access it. They're also told to check to be sure that their login works. So at least at public elementary, that's what's happening, but I'm sure it's happening all over.
Yeah. I'm also looking at the graph on the collection by building. I see Forest Park is the lowest one, but then when you look at the average age, Forest Park stands out as the newest. Is that what I'm, that average age, am I reading that correctly? That they would have the newest? That they would have the newest material?
Yeah, and Jill maybe can speak to this a little bit more, but I do know when we moved from the old Forest Park to the new Forest Park, she did a pretty deep clean of those books and had been building new books because there was also new curriculum and new other changes. So trying to build the collection, not only for student interest in, in reading, but also when some of those curricular topics change. We tried to build some collections that when teachers need to, again, for either research or around those, some of those content areas. So she is, I know, continuing to build, rebuild, if you will, that Forest Park collection from that standpoint.
We also would have three grades there now.
Correct.
Two and still, well, okay.
Please continue.
And then just lastly, to, to wrap up the, the, the library piece on the last page. Get there. Some broad goals. We try to not get too far ahead with our goal setting and specifics because we want to be responsive to the needs of the district, the coherence plan, curricular changes and some of those pieces. So when the goals that we've identified for the next few years may seem a little broad, but it kind of hit those major areas of categories that we want to continue to strive and focus at. So the first goal is around building and maintaining the library collection as we just talked, and growing the knowledge of all of our staff and students around those resources. Jill Poglis has done a great job of building some more videos, do more, some different professional development learning, some learning guides. There is only one of her plus the library aides to get that out to everyone. They certainly still meet with classrooms and help and support in that way as well. But that also gives students an opportunity to, or staff independently, to learn on their own some of those tools and resources. The second one is around continuing to build those information technology literacy standards and embedding those in the curriculum. So you saw some of those library skills that are there. There's also information literacy skills that we have tied that connect really well into social studies and our English standards. And so continuing to work with teaching and learning around where are those fit into integrating them in some of our content areas. The last goal is to continue our partnership with the Franklin Public Library. It has certainly been a strong partnership that we want to continue to look at ways that we can support them and they can support us and our students as we move forward. So those were some of the big picture goals that we've identified for the upcoming years.
What is UBD?
Understanding by Design is a curricular process. Understanding by Design. All those educational acronyms, I should have spelled it out. It's just the template that we use when we develop a unit in any of our content areas. It's just a, like one framework for that. Any questions?
Anybody else have any questions?
I want to thank Mr. Zadinsky. I think, you know, library is a good source and students must learn how to utilize that, you know? And thank you for dedication because it's, I am very, very passionate about reading and literacy, especially for students, you know, and it can be a very good source. And emphasizing for the students, you know, in summer, especially to keep using that because we have to improve our scores, you know, and that can only happen with students engaging and the families investing in that, you know? No matter how much the school district tries, but I think we have to, as a school district, we can just keep reminding them about, you know, these other resources. And a good learner will help in a long way, you know, in math, science, everything. So we have to, but thank you so much for what you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the 20, 2023 to 2026 library media plan as written.
So moved.
Second.
Our motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Dr. Khan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. All right. 2324 School Board Meeting Schedule. This is an action item of note. The, the meetings are generally the second and fourth Wednesday of the month. That changes in February and March this year, partly because of, well, mostly because of spring break at the end of March. There is two weeks in between the last January meeting and the first February meeting. And so there are two weeks in between a lot of those meetings and there's a, a spring break. Also, the meeting next August on 8/14, the annual meeting. It does seem like it's, it moved up this year and to, it used to be the last, or toward the end of August, and it's moved up to the 16th this year. Moved up to the 14th for next year. And part of that is because it fits in better with the opening of schools and back to school rights and that sort of thing. So, but does anybody have any questions or discussion on the school board meeting schedule?
One of the meetings is on my birthday and I'm a size medium, just so everyone.
With that noted, I move to approve the 2324 Board Meeting Schedule as presented.
Second.
Motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Dr. Khan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. 2324 CISA One Contract.
This is a pretty typical contract you see annually, excuse me, for our partnership with CISA, which is something we're associated with, and then also some of the services that we work through with them. Most often, it's just services that, it's audiologists or deaf or hard of hearing positions that we may not have a role for a full-time person within district or need to outsource it because it's better to share. So just looking for approval of this contract this evening.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion is made by Dr. Khan, seconded by Ms. Sapersky. Any further discussion? Linda, please.
What was it last year? Is there a percent increase?
I don't know the percent increase off the top of my head, but our services that we need are about the same. And it says in the language above, like it'll adjust at the need of the district administrator because our student enrollment fluxes. So we may have students that come in that need additional supports and then we work with them, but this is just what we know we need at this time, relatively the same as this year.
Anybody else have questions or further, further discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Policy 5315 School Wellness Info First Read. Ms. Paul, Ms. O'Neal. Ms. Cody. Welcome.
Okay, good evening. Again, we are here to provide some information for our first read of Policy 5313, School Wellness. And I have some just very incredible professionals right next to me here who are going to share a bulk of the work. So Lori O'Neal, District Nurse, Molly Call, District Nurse, and also Jessie Christensen, Food Service Manager. So again, we know that you've had the opportunity to see the, the changes paperwork, but we're here to share some of the updates and provide some of the context for those updates this evening.
Thank you. And I have to say at the start, because the CRC team was here earlier and I so badly wanted them to say, that team reached out to us, totally not related to this agenda topic, the team reached out to us earlier this year. They should have included in what they told you guys that they requested an AED located within the classroom at CRC. And they all became CPR and first aid certified this year, their whole team did, because they weren't, they, they wanted to do more than just wait for that emergency team to come to any needs within the CRC, which is so cool. So I really wanted them to say that. Now onto why we're here. So thank you guys so much for letting us come and talk with you today. As you're aware, tonight, we're going to be bringing some proposed revisions to the School Wellness Policy for your consideration. With this policy last being reviewed in June of 2019, it was due to be evaluated both for its alignment with the district coherence plan and strategic goals and also for an assessment to make sure that the rules are reflective of current evidence and best practices related to the student health. This policy is also special in the fact that it is also due for a formalized assessment, which is just one aspect of the DPI's administrative review of our nutritional programming, which will be occurring within about the next month. So our Student Wellness Committee has many roles and disciplines, giving us really broad representation from across the board for the district. I won't read off to you guys all of the different roles that are comprised, comprise our committee, but it's a really, really passionate and high-functioning committee that we love being a part of. All the members of the committee had the opportunity to contribute to both the review of the policy, whether it's in the language of the policy or a part of why this committee exists, is to constantly evaluate how are these practices living and breathing on a day-to-day basis and to review the proposed revisions that we're bringing to you tonight. Within that policy, a subgroup of those professionals consisting of nurses, parents, and both food and services, food services and student services leadership, completed a quantitative assessment and evaluation of policy. To accomplish this, a standardized tool, the WellSat 3.0, was used to identify opportunities both for policy language improvements and for practices that may have needed to be improved upon. You can see a snapshot of what those assessment results look like here. We refer to this tool one from time, time to time, and there's a lot of different categories and subjects. So I think it might just be helpful to know that when we talk about this more quantitative tool that we use to evaluate the policy, that this is the kind of feedback that we receive from the completion of that assessment. We also, the team reviewed current Wisconsin State requirements related to a local wellness policy, USDA standards for school, DPI recommendations. And of course, we considered any recently updated evidence-based strategies to assist our team in accomplishing our overall student wellness goals. Many of our revisions, our revisions to this policy resulted in what you guys saw as our striking out the entire current policy. Much of that was related to either grammatical changes, formatting updates, or simple wording clarifications, which is why it was easier to strike out the whole thing and really call your attention to what are the key things that we want you guys to, to have awareness of. Additionally, there was a significant volume of edits for your review on this slide that are reflective of best practices that are already occurring, but were not concretely previously spelled out in the policy rules. For example, Jessie, who is an amazing addition to the team, and you guys will get to know Jessie's work more, more well in the future, I'm sure. Her and her food services team are already doing great work in incorporating hydroponics and locally grown produce into their menu, protecting the financial statuses of students. Those things just hadn't been concretely called out in this policy and are recommended to be. So we were able to make those additions. That would be the items that are listed on this slide. Our evaluation process also clearly identified some areas of student wellness that are in need of actual change in our health and safety practices. The committee spent the most significant time, once again, on evaluation of food and beverages in the classroom. As part of that evaluation, we spoke with students and parents at all levels across the district, did many observations, met with building and district administration, reviewed our internal data and gathered practices from other districts. Health and nursing services has a critical role in protecting students, both with food allergies and any chronic diagnoses that may be impacted by their nutrition status. And certainly, that work is driven by what food is made available to students throughout the school day. Across the district, we have managed five suspected cases of anaphylaxis, which is a life-threatening allergy to a food substance this school year alone, and have responded to 22 cases in the last five years, which really highlights to our team the importance of this topic. It's not only about food allergies, but it is certainly very highly driven in the fact that a potential outcome is the loss of an individual in those circumstances, that we really, really make sure that we're trying to do our best to keep all of our staff and students safe in this area. However, we see that many of our students and families do struggle to comply with the current policy language and our employees have a tough time with learning, how do they apply the current rules to various more difficult or unique situations that may arise? To assist us in evaluating how we might be able to offer more flexibility in the foods that are allowed in a classroom with an intended outcome of greater satisfaction with the options that are available to students and more importantly, improved safety and outcomes related to increased compliance with our rules about snacks in classrooms. Our team evaluated reported life-threatening allergy triggers across the district. So this is, information is reported to us based on what children have already been diagnosed with. We know that children can risk having a life-threatening allergic reaction to something that they have not been diagnosed with yet. This is what we already made aware of. This data was very helpful in helping our team to identify the greatest areas of risk that exist to us, notably still peanuts and tree nuts. In addition to observing that we do currently successfully manage the health needs of students allergic to food in their classrooms at snack time through things like individualized health plans, family communication, safe eating practices, among other aspects of the day. This graph breaks down our district allergy information by school to again reinforce that our rules and behaviors related to peanuts and tree nuts, among other important triggers, remain critical. And also that we can consider how to expand our options without changing the level of risk present in classrooms. Specifically, and I know it's really hard to see on that slide, about 1% of the student population at FHS in the middle school currently reports a life-threatening allergy to products containing wheat. And we currently have no students at the elementary schools with a life-threatening allergy to products containing wheat, which will be important to know in what Lori is about to talk you about.
Thanks, Molly. So given the district data, the Student Wellness Committee, Building and District Administration, and the Health Services Teams are proposing to expand the snack options currently allowed in classrooms at the elementary and middle school to include pretzels, popcorn, and goldfish crackers. These items were selected because the only new noteworthy allergen, as Molly stated, in the classrooms would be wheat. Additionally, they are small, solid snacks that are typically easily contained to one area and they are very frequently requested by both students who have limiting dietary restrictions and truly the most requested by students and families in the district. The previous rule requires that all classrooms in the elementary and middle school are resulting nut-free. Acknowledging that our high school students are starting to become more aware of how to manage their health conditions, among other factors influencing food safety for adolescents, we are suggesting that staff, students, and families at FHS make every effort to prevent nut products entering classrooms. In order to promote equity for students with food-related health concerns and to keep all of our students safe in our buildings, our staff do an incredible job with utilizing non-food rewards. And they get very creative in terms of knowing what will motivate students at each developmental stage. To further support this, and at the recommendation of many school health organizations, the policy language is being revised to indicate that food-based rewards or prizes will no longer be permitted during the academic day. Similar to the use of food rewards, we have also seen significant improvement in our team's practices for celebrating special events with non-food items. In this area, there are also many best practice recommendations for both student health and student equity to eliminate food-based celebrations from the school day. Our proposal focuses on ensuring that any foods brought to school to celebrate child, celebrate special occasions are not the cause of a safety risk or feeling of being excluded for any child. Students can bring in food from their own homes within the approved snack rules as part of any celebration. If a classroom event is planned during which students would celebrate with food, not from their own home, it would need to be approved by the building administrator, nursing, and the students' parents. Nursing services and our communications team are planning to support this process with additional tools and resources for staff and families, looking forward to the next school year. Our final proposed practice change. We reviewed evidence and recommendations available regarding caffeine consumption for our high school population as the sale of caffeinated beverages at their building is a very common request. Our proposed recommendation is to allow the sale of products containing no more than 100 milligrams of caffeine per serving at the high school. 100 milligrams of caffeine per serving at the high school level only. We thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be here tonight and to present to you this policy change. We'd be happy to answer your questions.
Angie, please.
So, thank you for taking this up. It was one of the most frequently commented upon policies, like during the campaign, all people wanted to talk about was the classroom snack policy, and as someone who had to pack snacks, yeah, it's just hard. So, I think our commenter from earlier, your presentation did a good job of dispelling the notion that the classroom snack policy is intended to label foods as healthy versus not healthy, and is more about mitigating exposure risk, and as someone who grew up with a peanut allergy, if you're not in the habit of reading labels, the best intentions go awry. So, I think that that part is reasonable. I do think it would be valuable to state in the policy, as she suggested, that that's the reason why this is happening. And then, you proposed striking the language about striving for nut-free classrooms. I can't remember the exact language, but there's no, you can still pretty much, you can still say our elementary and middle school classrooms are nut-free, and I don't recall seeing that stated overtly in the policy, and that might be, rather than sort of making it look like the high school has a more strict standard by not stating, you know what I'm saying, the converse at the elementary and middle school levels.
And we did go back and forth on that. The revision was because the previous part kind of implies that because those are the only foods allowed in, it will be nut-free, but I think that is a great suggestion.
Regarding the, because one of the comments which the parent brought up about ranch, ranch mostly a hint from egg, and you know, so I know the egg allergy, but was that the reason that we exclude ranch from, and it'd been 7.6%, you know? Egg allergy is, one of the, being gastroenterologist, is one of the reasons for esophagitis and other entities, but is it because definitely nuts and peanuts, I do understand there's significant, you know, concerns with that. But, again, studies have shown, again, I'm talking as GI physician at the same time and as a school board member, but wheat and nuts, you know, the most common, you know, which cause more symptoms. So is there, can we do some more research on possibly allowing egg-containing product, you know, like a ranch, to the snack, especially because we have to balance the risk of allergies at the same time balancing healthy diet, you know? And eating vegetables, me being a parent, you know, it's out, when I tell the kids, hey, come on, man, you know, eat this broccoli, it doesn't go down, you know? But if you take a ranch, somehow it becomes tasty, you know? So, ranch does wonders to the vegetables, so can we help the parents to solve that? And I think, you know, looking at the data and what I know as a physician, can we have a kind of, because we want to mitigate life-threatening emergencies as such, but is there a rule for negotiation as such? That's what my point is.
We'd be happy to look into that. I think what we, in doing more observations this year in relation to this policy, the products, first of all, it's a challenge to draw the line somewhere as to what we allow in a classroom. We get requests for things like ranch hummus, discussions about my child's overall nutrition status, where we really focus on, we absolutely, as a team, prescribe to everything that you, as a gastroenterologist, that the USDA says is what's best for children for nutrition. We're talking about snack-only, not their meals. Families are free to pack anything they want to in their child's lunch. My personal apprehension with dressings is that when you look at the lower levels, they're tougher to contain, so anything, we have a lot of discussion about yogurt right now, where when you see a child eating string cheese and just in observing the actual level of risk to children around them, if I'm eating a string cheese and Jessie is allergic to dairy, it looks a lot different in the eyes of a healthcare professional than someone who's eating a potentially liquidy-containing substance that can leak in her direction and be more challenging to clean up. And a lot of it is that we've tried to work with our teachers and principals about what can you manage and enforce while knowing that your priority for the day obviously is keeping kids safe, but also instruction. So, we really don't want them to be having to spend all of their time inspecting the food that every kid brings in to see if it falls into one of these categories. We're trying to keep it the thing that's easily glanceable to say, I can't have you eating trail mix, which, you know what I mean? But I think it's a great suggestion and something that we'd be happy to look into more.
Maybe, 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 because, of course, I understand the younger kids, you know? At elementary, it's difficult to grow, you know, sometimes, you know, always when my kids are in elementary, always have to tell them, hey, you know, you're eating the nut here, we can't eat it because of the school and all that stuff, because we want to add it to the policy. But maybe at the middle school and high school, you know, if a kid, you know, wants to kind of bring, you know, and the reason sometimes, you know, as a parent, also I can see that the challenges which becomes is that when you tell it's okay for the lunch, but not for the snack, kids, you know, just grab a snack and that's what, they don't even take lunch, you know, and then that's what they eat, and what they eat, are they eating during lunchtime or the snack time? It's so difficult to manage even as a parent, you know, because you can tell them this is snack for, but they'll eat through lunch. If you can tell them you're lunch, you'll eat through snack. So we can't control as a parent, all right? So, maybe kind of, you know, if you, again, that's my position, you know, kind of, you know, because you're the experts, you know, I'm a school board member here, you know, not a gastroenterologist, so I definitely kind of recommend to kind of at least look into the middle school and the high school, because we want to ensure, you know, obesity is on rise. By 2050, US will be the most obese nation in the world, and we see that we want to make the kids healthier, but at the same time, are we going to the extent that the kids are abandoning fruits and vegetables, especially vegetables, I'm talking about fruits, you know, they don't eat with ranch, I don't think so, but vegetables, and, you know, it's so hard to sell the kids to eat vegetables, oh my God, I can tell you that as a parent. I don't know if any of the parents agree with me, but it's very hard to sell the kids to eat vegetables by itself without a ranch. I can sell it.
Ranch doesn't help at my house, but.
My daughter loves Brussels sprouts, but.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the high school doesn't have these restrictions.
Correct.
Okay. That's really all I wanted to clarify.
I have a question.
Please.
Is the district wellness committee different than the FPS student wellness committee? Do the same? Because you have different references. It's the same committee?
It is the same.
And you talked about this assessment tool. Is this the first time you're using it? And it also indicates the result will be on the website, so.
They are located on the nutrition services webpage from the previous time that it was completed, so after a policy is approved, then we load our results into their system and get a scorecard, so it's a little bit backward. The, so the revisions that are being made right now, it was first completed, it became a requirement by the USDA in 2020. So the first, the last time we came to talk about the policy was the first time that it was completed.
Okay, so there is one there right now, and there'll be a new one once we get done.
Correct.
Okay. And you also have requirements in here about physical education, you know, they have to have one and a half credits. It seems like, why is that in here? Isn't that part of our graduation policy?
It's a great question. The local wellness policy kind of builder that is suggested by the USDA and DPI does have some overlap with things that you might expect to be in other policies. The intention is really that this is a very comprehensive policy in the areas of school nutrition, nutrition education, physical activity, and wellness promotion. So, essentially, we score lower on things in our triennial evaluation if we are not being concrete about the practices that we do in those areas here as well.
And then you mentioned you wanted to include hydroponics, and why is that so important? What makes, it's how you grow vegetables, why do you have to have that in the policy?
Do you mean why is hydroponics important, or why is it important to call it out in this policy?
Both.
Well, in the WellSat tool that we use to, there's like 2.1.0 point for how comprehensive your policy is, and there's one section on there, it's like, how are you promoting local foods within like your program or within your wellness policy? And we just decided to put that in there. That's showing that as a district, we're promoting local and fairly sourced food.
The eventual intention for it is that it does start to trickle down and can influence how we educate children to understand different aspects of agriculture and how that impacts their own menu options within their district, too.
Will, because of the hydroponics, will there ever be a class where students are growing the vegetables that we're using in the district? Is that a, is that something that we could look forward to?
So, we purchased from Fork Farms. Fork Farms has vertical stack hydroponic gardens. We have 10 of them, five at the middle school, five at the high school. They do come with a full on curriculum, so I've used Fork Farms. My previous district, we did have one in the classroom that we had an educator. The key component in using it, though, for food service is that Jessie would have to have somebody oversee the harvesting of it, so the testing of the water, the growing of it, totally all of that's fine, but the harvesting piece would have to be overseen to make sure that it's then going to be ready for food service. But certainly, that component of it exists, and we could look into that. It doesn't take a whole lot on a day-to-day basis, it's kind of the beginning, and during the middle's pretty easy, at the end, again, it becomes a little bit more cumbersome from kind of just all the things you have to do in the middle, is a lot of just testing the water to make sure it has the right pH balance and things like that.
It probably doesn't, if it's lettuce at this point, if it's more than lettuce, maybe there's a class.
You can grow lots of things, you can grow lots of things though.
Understand.
We grow it for just lettuce at the curve point, but.
Aren't there cucumbers, too? We tried growing cucumbers, but we, we're not bees, so we have time for like, doing the.
Where you have to, where you have to do the pollination.
Pollinating, yeah. So we tried pollinating, it just didn't work very well, but we're gonna try again. But I did reach out to the principals of both the high school and the middle school to incorporate them into curriculums, and they're still working on it, so.
Great, thank you. Linda.
It just seems, you know, in our policy, it says, "All served lettuce will be locally grown in hydroponic gardens within Franklin High School." I mean, that's our policy. Only lettuce from there will be served?
Yes.
Well, we, I think it's the best of our ability, because sometimes with our growing, if we can't, if they're not mature enough, then we have to outsource from our vendor, but we're doing as best as we can.
So I'll just provide a little insight into lettuce, because remember when I talked to healthcare, super excited about it? Fork Farms, like, I'm crazy excited about it. So, this is what sold me on Fork Farms four years ago. The average lettuce that you eat from the grocery store, if you buy it in the bag, the fresh express travels 2,000 miles, it's frozen four times over the course of four weeks.
Come on.
The average lettuce that we would buy from a vendor who's not local is going to travel 2,000 miles, frozen four times over the course of four weeks. That lettuce that she's growing in the hydroponic garden is going to get cut off and be put in a salad in 15 minutes. That's the difference, has a better nutritional value, it is better for you, it's never frozen, it's as fresh as you could possibly get.
I support the hydroponic lettuce and its inclusion in the policy. There's no harm in including it, they're only benefit.
And I think the language in the policy does say like, as much as possible to the best of our abilities, if, you know, if a blight comes and kills all of our lettuce, we're not going to go lettuce-free until we can grow more.
If it's not there, we should probably just include whatever possible, so we're compliant with our policy.
And one of the things which I personally feel is that when students see this module of course where they see the growth of and giving the fruits, it's a real-life experience. And, you know, I personally, you know, I think that's such a neat thing that you put in some small effort and see the fruits of that, which you can actually eat, consume, and that gives you, I think, a very positive, you know, psychological writing and healthy living as such, so it's a very good module, I guess.
Well, I'm a master gardener, and school gardens are a big thing. When we're gonna get in a school garden?
Sounds like a good project.
Love it.
So, are we?
It is another thing our committee's talking about, so.
Great, let's move forward on it. Anybody else have any questions on policy 5315? Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
We'll be talking about it in June again. Policy 3720, student transportation, this is an action item, second read. I am looking for a motion to approve policy 3720 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Larson. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And policy 3720, student conduct on school bus, action item, looking for a motion to retire school board policy 3720.1.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Please.
Sorry. I know it's being dismissed, but this part that's in italics where it says, "Bus drivers are encouraged to report incidents of misconduct," school officials, where does that go? Because to me, the word encouraged gives a lot of latitude, which of course, we should accord people latitude to make those decisions, but it's like, so if one driver decides, this really doesn't, I don't care what this kid's doing, and then the next driver, you know, is like, absolutely not, you know, I'm reporting you, I don't know, should it be like, bus drivers are required to report incidents of misconduct, or if they're just encouraged, then what's the point? Or is this retired?
Motion was made by Mrs. Larson. Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Larson, seconded by Mrs. Sapursky. I guess I might be able to answer that a little bit. As I have filled out some of those forms, I think encouraged is, I think required is probably too strong.
Okay.
I think when things happen on the bus, they are reported, that's, and we're also not talking about Franklin School District employees, they're right-way employees. Next year, they're first student employees.
And that's why I wondered if this was more pertaining to people who aren't even our employees.
Debbie, I know you're checking, but this was all then grandfathered in under the student transportation policy, basically saying that all school rules apply on the bus.
Right. And we are retiring 3720, so.
Yeah.
It's part of a move point, right?
Okay, that's.
I think you're referring to the encouraged language in the report, right? That's in the handbooks? Mary, that's what you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay, so that is where it is in the handbooks, and encouraged, I think, the strong point to what Mike kind of said about it, the administration, just today, actually, we were talking to first students about reminding bus drivers to report behaviors if there's something that's going on on the bus and what that process looks like, so it goes to our office, it goes to the office of the school that the students go to. So that language will be what's in the handbook, which is why this policy is being retired.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That policy is retired. Preliminary budget number two, Mr. Cromie, please.
So, thank you very much. Preliminary budget, as you have in front of you, is based on all the assumptions that was brought, that were brought forth on May 10th, so 4% raise across the board, 10% for health, additional open enrollment students, a couple of additional resident students, and those particular pieces. What I really want to point you to would be page 19, this is our general fund at a glance, so this will look very similar, I'm trying to make it big up on the screen in case you're looking there, but I guess everybody has it in front of them, so this will look very similar to what was brought in January, so you'll see on the left-hand side revenues, on the right-hand side expenses, so I have the January numbers, and then in the middle of kind of the title and the January numbers, you'll see numbers as of today. So those numbers are reflective of changes that were made between January and now. So when we think salaries and benefits, yes, we've had some staff leave between, these were probably pulled on May 1st, so between January 25th and May 1st, we've had some staff members leave. Again, if we hire them between now and then, I know the exact dollar amount, otherwise I put an estimated hiring dollar amount in. I always use a full benefit package for benefit-eligible employees to be on the safe side. At this point, I don't have any data of 50% take family health and 30% take single and whatever have you, so at this point, we're working on the full health benefit. You'll see at the bottom, we have a deficit of 289,000 at this particular point in time. When we met in January, we were at about 141,000. One of the key pieces I talked about on the 10th was that department breakout and providing departments with their own allocation, so with that zero-based budgeting and that department allocation, we actually went up in dollars that would have been considered. in dollars that would have been considered department dollars. Some of that is the fact they weren't aware of what their allocations were in years past or what was actually being alloc, I should say, charged to them or coded technically to their department. So some of that's gonna be a learning curve for us in '23, '24 to figure out what actually goes in where and who's actually responsible for it. But I think I mentioned on the 10th, having our directors be responsible for that puts really that ownership on to make sure, is this really the thing we need versus, I give my child a credit card and he just buys whatever he needs because he's not really responsible for it in the end. So trying to put that responsibility piece back to them. So we see a little bit of rise in the department budgets. We see a little bit of rise in the building budgets, too. I'll get, the, the easiest example I'm gonna give you from department budgets actually relates to state competitions. So we have an account, single line item of $65,000. It is used for all state teams and/or individuals, whether that's athletics or activities who make state, and then whatever it costs for them to travel to and from state or whatever's needed for that. That was always held up at this particular office, although Jordan runs every expense that goes through that. So rather than me house that and Jordan just spend the dollars, I just plod it right into Jordan's budget and said, here you go, here's the $65,000 line item. I really don't know what it's gonna need from year to year, so we're gonna start at 65 and we'll just start evaluating it. So if we spend $25,000 this year and we spend 25 next year, it probably doesn't need to be 65. We'll start evaluating that. But the key component of that is Jordan is responsible for it. Jordan's allocating all the dollars, he's actually spending them. Let's put those dollars back with the person who's gonna be facilitating that so that he can monitor, how am I really spending these dollars? And make sure that I'm within that $65,000 budget, or if we have the greatest year ever in every team and every individual is going to stay it, then great, we overspent, but holy cow, that's gonna look great for Franklin, and we'll try to figure out how we're gonna make that work. So we had several of those kind of pieces that were housed up here, but we're not really responsible for. So we tried to get those to the correct budget or stakeholder. So again, this at a glance kind of puts that all together. Another change you're gonna see is gonna happen to be for our capital improvements. So a little bit of change from past philosophy, and this really is an extension of COVID. So as we know, with COVID, supply and demand became an issue, so it really became an issue with building supplies specifically roofing. And what we found over the last few years is that vendors don't always have all the product you need, and it's kind of take-it-when-you-can-get-it type of thing versus, well, we need it and install by June 30th. That might not work. So ultimately, what we're gonna do, again on page 19, you're gonna see a capital improvement line item of 1.265 million dollars. In our budget, like, in the coding system, that's simply a transfer of 1.265 to this Fund 46, to our capital improvement fund. And then that's why you'll see a revenue increase here, and we're gonna expend those funds out of Fund 46 because it doesn't follow a fiscal year. So if we plan to have roofing done by June 30th and they finish it July 15th, no big deal. There's no concern from us from a general fund, which has to end June 30th requirement. Fund 46 can flow, ebb and flow regardless of the timing of the year. So we'll still do all of our capital projects, but we don't have that hard June 30th deadline anymore. If it happens to carry over into July, so what? Doesn't matter. So we're just gonna transfer that particular process to get our capital improvement dollars into there. So that's just the biggest difference in capital improvement. So you'll see a little bit of, well, you'll see the whole 1.265 increase revenue have a subsequent increase with expenses for that particular piece. Food service, you're gonna notice, will run into a deficit. So currently, our fund balance in food service is pretty significant. Again, COVID didn't have a lot of great benefits, but it had a great benefit in food service. But ultimately, we are only allowed to carry a three-month fund balance, and so not divide by 12, because schools don't operate until they divide by nine. So if we take our expenses, and I'll just use 1.8 million for the ease of it, we divide by nine, is 200,000, so we can carry roughly a 600, $650,000 fund balance. So we have to determine a way to spend. So one of the things I've asked Jesse to do is go through and take a look at all the equipment and start prioritizing it by need. So some things we wanna repair. So we talked about a dishwasher repair today versus a replacement. So we could replace it and start chewing down that fund balance, but it really doesn't make sense. Let's find a higher priority item that we need to replace. What's nice about the Fork Farms and the hydroponic gardens, we bought those out of the fund balance for Fund 50, but it's gonna save an operational cost, so it's great that we spent some of that fund balance, but we are gonna see some operational savings of it long-term. So we're gonna continue to do that. But ultimately, we need to operate it in a deficit until we get it down to that three-month requirement. So we're just taking a look at some equipment, trying to prioritize that, and then do some replacements or upgrades of those equipment, and improve food service at the same particular time. Community Ed and Rec, really the biggest change in here is we've added, at this point in time, again, this is our preliminary budget, 1.825 million of additional tax levy, that's really 50% of our kind of estimated recreation building at this particular time. So that's all in the process of being developed and plans being finalized. Tentatively, we're trying to go to bid in October. Some of that's just gonna be timelines for DNR related. There's a lot of wetlands, as you know, back here, so that all takes time to delineate that. And I learned that there's three delineations of wetland the other day, and only thought there was one, but there's a setback, there's a buffer, and then there's the actual wetland. So I was not aware that you had to mitigate three things. So in any case, that takes time to do that with both the city and the DNR.
Yes, I have a question on that. I think we also had 2.3 million of fund balance that we're gonna use for that project?
Correct.
Is it in, I don't see 2.3 in there.
So that 2.3 million is actually sitting in Fund 21. So several years ago, DPI allowed a one-time transfer of your Fund 80 balance into Fund 21. So the reason they allowed that, there was some considerable consideration regarding fund balance by funds and what you would be allowed to levy in it. So DPI allowed a one-time exception for you to move funds, in this case, from our recreation fund into Fund 21 as a holding to use for long-term projects versus having it potentially be used against your levy and then just chewed down from year to year.
Yes, I'm looking on page seven where you have the fund balances. I, I see 1.3 in community ed, 1.6 in special revenue. Are you seeing a split between those two?
I'd have to take a look specifically, but I know it's $2.3 million and.
I'm wondering why we wouldn't spend that first as opposed to increasing levy? I mean, that project's not gonna be built entirely next year, why would we?
Correct.
We could defer that.
So as I presented at the, the project, our intention was to split the levy over two years to help smooth it out.
But when would you be spending the 2.3 you already have in hand?
So we would be spending, if we levy this, it's just gonna go into the fund and we'd spend whatever dollars happened to be there first. If the intention is to levy more in the second year, so when you build things, they're gonna give you what's called a draw schedule. This project is estimated to take 12 months, so they're gonna tell us in the first month it's gonna be this. So they'll figure out what they think they can all accomplish in month one. It might just be to dig the foundation.
Right, but.
They might be getting walls up. So based on that draw schedule, it'll tell us when funds will be done. So potentially, in the first two months, we could chew up all 2.3 million because they had, it's a paneled structure, so they might have the whole structure up and.
But you haven't, you don't have that 2.3 in your expen- proposal, but I did for expenditures. You only have the 1.3.
Yeah, I'm only worried about the levy at this particular point, because I don't know what the exact draw schedule is.
Can I ask a question?
The intention was just to split the levy over two years.
Do you plan to utilize that entirety of that 2.3 million dollars on the building project?
Yep.
Is there any reason we couldn't use even, how much do we need to leave in the balance for the community, fund balance for community ed rec? That seems like a pretty hefty fund balance.
Yeah, I, I guess I don't know specifically. I would say 1.3 million is probably more than we need.
Yeah.
But until we hash out all this, we have a particular budget we're trying to fit the project in, so we wanna make sure that we can get that done inside the project. So right now, it's a holding number for the preliminary budget.
And can I ask one more question about that? Was anybody else trying to ask a question? So you mentioned a one-time use of this, I think it was Fund 50, as a holding area for.
Fund 21.
Fund 21. How long has the money been in that? Did you move it?
Oh, no.
It's been there for a while.
Yeah, I wanna say it's probably three or four years ago, maybe five that they allowed that transfer.
And that's like just cash that's getting interest or?
Yep. So that was the community ed recreation piece that I wanted to mention. You can see our property tax levy at this point, we're anticipating keeping our mill rate flat. I do have a defeasance built into the debt services fund again, as part of being a good steward of our tax dollars, so trying to pay down our debt. But again, everything at this point from the tax levy, general fund voucher payments, that's all good, but some of those dollar amounts, the defeasance and the 1.8 million dollars for rec are like holding numbers to figure out where do we really stand? And I really need to know what the final number is, projected number for that recreation building. That'll help me then understand, when does the 2.3 fall in? What does the actual split of the rest of the building gonna cost?
Please, Linda.
I'm gonna back up a little bit of this, okay?
You go wherever you would like to. We'll tack it on to the hour and 40 minutes today.
Yes. Last year at this time, we had before us a staffing report with all the information, and of course, you may recall that kind of highlighted our changes in the music program. So why would we not have that at this point now, so we know what staffing we are funding with these dollars?
So our plan with staffing is to bring that after the school year starts, and we actually have our real numbers of staffing, much like you asked Laura to come back with that this year. So that's on the schedule to come up, I believe in September or October, I don't recall exactly to look at that piece.
Our schedule in the past has always been a, you know, we see it now and then we see it later. Otherwise, you wouldn't have the information about changes in the band program until then.
So our staffing is built on what is actually needed as of today, so.
I'm just asking the board, I heard you just said, this is what the board has always seen, this is the information you relied on last year when you got those early warning signs or information that there were changes that people weren't happy about. We won't have any of that information.
For me, that information didn't just come from the staffing report. And so if you are in good communication with your citizenry, I was more than aware that changes were happening in the music, music department without the staffing report. I'm able to interpret this data without the staffing report at this point in time. Does the rest of the board feel the need to have this staffing report?
Well, I think, I think part of that answer is in, I, I think it's, I, I don't think it's necessary. We'd like to have as much information as quickly as we can. This year is different. My personal opinion is because this, this, this year is different because of the state budget and, and, and the timing of it.
We.
To say.
The board has raised concerns about how many coaches we have versus teachers. You know, we're, we're doing resource allocation here. Maybe we wanna look and see what those proportions are. There were tweaks along here that might be valuable. I don't know why we would, why we would ask for less information. Why would we do that?
I think it's because it's not complete at this point.
Budgets aren't about exactness, they're about forecasts and scenarios. We know it changes, it always changes.
Does the rest of the, anyone else on the board feel the need to have the staffing report included at this stage of the budgeting process?
We are, we've done this for 15 years, and now we're saying it's not important.
I don't think anybody's saying it's not important. What I'm hearing is that it would be more accurate when we have actual numbers in, I think you just said September would be when we would have that. And I think in terms of the, the budget overall, I think what Mike just said about, you know, we don't, we don't even really know what all these numbers are gonna be until the state decides what their budget is going to be. You know, a lot of these numbers are kind of our best guess.
Budgets are always best guess. So that statement to me doesn't mean.
I don't, I don't think. Okay, so.
The, the, we have in the last couple of years gotten more staffing at this time.
We're gonna ask you for more staffing information.
We haven't, I don't think, had it for the last 15 years, because I know we haven't for the last four. Perhaps, perhaps there was more in the 10 years prior that, that, at any rate, I think the question remains, is this something that the board, is a specific staffing report something that the board is looking for, or is staffing information in terms of how much are we budgeting for staffing sufficient at this point in the budgeting process?
Budgets are about choices. The staffing we requested broke out core subjects, exploratory staffing, special education. How many educational assistance are we explaining on?
But you'll recall last year that the, but the initial staffing report we had was a wide range based on how many were actually hired versus how many were shelled out. And I, the only thing that came of the staffing report at this pa- this point in the budgeting cycle last year was the, the intense conversation about what was happening in music. It didn't affect any substantive conversation towards the budgeting process in general.
Was that music, that discussion on music staffing valuable to you?
Yes, it was, and it happened for a variety of reasons, namely being in communication with people who were concerned about it.
The, 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 I don't, I don't think the, I don't think the information about the music program or the, the staffing of the music program was, was important in me doing my job, because I didn't have a decision to make about how many educators there would be in the music program.
I think there was some attempt by board members here to impact that decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so anyway.
I think that opportunity.
I don't hear the rest of the board agreeing with your request for additional reports to be generated by the professional staff, unless I'm incorrect? So let's move on.
Not an additional report, it's a report we had before.
Does that report exist right now?
We did not create that for today. My intention was to bring budget, which is dollar numbers, versus a budget and staffing report. I, I guess part of my job is to make sure that we're staffed, or I have accounted for all the staff members we need. So one of the things we've done to do that is we moved up both the middle school and high school course selection, so Bob worked really hard to get that process up with both Jenna and Mike, so we did that. We had those numbers earlier, so we were able to generate, how many PE teachers do we need, and how many art teachers do we need, and music, and all sorts of different particular pieces, then it's on to Laura to figure out, how are we going to, if we have to have a traveling teacher, how do we make that work? If we have to hire, how do we make that work? So we've taken a look at all of those pieces a little bit earlier than we normally do to try to make sure that we have the appropriate number that we need based on how many students are taking X, Y, and Z. And a lot of those course areas are gonna ebb and flow every year for none other than how many kids wanna take it this year versus how many kids wanna take it next year. And there are times when teachers grow programs, and there are times when programs don't grow for any number of reasons. Could be the group that's coming through, the class that's coming through, could be a great teacher who everybody says you need to take, Mrs. so-and-so. Ebs and flows. So, but my intention is I take a look at what Bob's put together with those and what Laura has, and we staff based on what our numbers are as of today. So if we don't have a position hired, but we need to hire it, it's in the budget. It's in the number that you're gonna see. So I don't budget on who's on, I don't budget who's here, I budget who we need.
I just was gonna ask, does a, a document like that exist? Does a report like that exist?
We haven't generated it for this year. Could we put it together? Sure, but we haven't generated it.
Would it be a lengthy process to put it together, or is that something that you, I don't, I'm not computer savvy, but like hit a button and there it comes out? I don't know how your.
Uh, it's not just hit a button and there it comes out. We have to do, well, I don't, that falls on Laura's department, so she has to do some work putting those things together, but I don't know how onerous it is. I guess I will let her respond to it.
It would just be going, it would be just going through and collecting the data, so it, I mean, it would take, you know, a significant amount of time, but it is something that we can put together.
Is that something that we can see before final budget?
October.
Like our, our next, our next budget presentation? Thinking about it in terms of, I think it's not, I, I guess I wasn't necessarily missing it tonight, but I think Linda, you know, has a point that it is, you know, an important part of the budgeting process, and as I'm, you know, sitting here and hearing this and you know, sitting here and hearing this and thinking about it, I'm gonna guess that salaries are one of the biggest, if not the biggest, items that we spend money on. And so it might be beneficial to have some maybe better understanding of exactly where those staffing numbers are in terms of how that impacts our budget.
So I'm just trying to.
Barry, please.
Digest all of this. So based on what the state does, are we automatically gonna have more money or, or we could have way more money?
Wow, you are very optimistic.
Yeah, Mary. We could have no more money.
We could have a wide range of zero to a lot.
Okay.
One of the numbers I just calculated, just for reference per the, a lot of our guest speakers here this evening, was the move to eight percent, which is the cost of living. So just so the board is aware, that's roughly $1.492 million.
So for each one percent.
Eight percent.
Okay, I was wanting to think about it in terms of each one percent.
Yeah, I guess divided by four is three seventy-five. Per percent.
Does that include benefits?
Yep, that's fully benefited.
Okay, thank you. You anticipated my question. Can I?
Please.
Change the subject. On page twelve.
Wait, can we do this out by the, we're gonna get staffing information before, like, maybe.
With our next budget.
Do we have an adjourned meeting?
It is.
When are we next scheduled to discuss the budget?
We'd ask for pre-approval approval, approval of the pre-approved, ah, sorry, of the preliminary budget in June. That approval essentially allows us to pay people as of July one and start paying vendors. We order lots of stuff over the summer, obviously, to get school ready for September one or five, whatever it happens to be next particular year.
So then it seems reasonable that maybe we could have that staffing report with that approval process in June if you're gonna be.
Yep, we can put that together.
Thank you.
On page twelve, I'm just wondering if you can explain, in the sidebar, you talked about decreased in purchase services is due to moving costs to instructional functions when they are for students. I have no idea what that means. Can you give me an example?
So, woofercoding, Wisconsin uniform, financial required, accounting requirements is the eighteen-digit code that we use per DPI requirements. It has a whole bunch of sections, six to be exact, that all mean something inside of that eighteen sequence code. One of them is called function. Function is really the who, not who like Max Ute or Andy, who in art, math, music, right? So a lot of what was being coded before was all being coded to this two-three-one-nine-nine-nine. Two-three, anything that starts with two-three is really a general administrative accounting code. So we would buy textbooks out of two-three-one-nine-nine-nine. We would buy some Chromebooks out of two-three-one-nine-nine-nine. We use it for everything. Essentially, we said, well, that's really not an administrative cost. Textbooks are curriculum costs, that should go to a two-one. Instructional technology should really go to a two-two. So we have taken a look at a lot of what has been accounted in the certain accounting structure and pushed it out to where it really should be.
Did you say that generally has resulted in a move from, like, sort of this admin slush fund out? Like, where's, where is this generally shifting from and to?
Yeah, I would say a lot of it is shifting from that two-three, and DPI doesn't care what falls after two-three.
Okay.
To either one-one-zero, which is considered undifferentiated curriculum, or you can use it for really anything.
Okay.
Or to two-one, which would be instructional curriculum.
Okay, thank you. That's as much as I wanna know.
I have a question also. So the, the one-time stipend that we offered our staff, is that in these numbers?
That is not. So for two reasons. One, that was decided after these numbers were already calculated and put together. And because it's really a pass-through dollar from ESAR, so revenue will exactly match the expense, I didn't bother adjusting these because it's still $289,000 to the red. If there had been some cost difference that was gonna cost us or change that two-eighty-nine number, then I would've gone through and made those adjustments. But I had already had this assembled by the time that we had finalized that particular piece. And again, it's a zero dollar net.
It is seven hundred thousand more expenditures.
And seven hundred thousand more in revenue.
Right, yep.
So again, zero effect on the $289,000.
I also have a question on page, page ten. The middle school and classes, the million-dollar change in non-capital supplies and equipment, a million-dollar increase, which you indicated was for.
So the vast majority of that is related to.
Question.
I, I already know what it is, Linda.
I don't, you don't know what my question is?
Well, I spent an hour and forty minutes with you on the phone today.
I know, and I'm not gonna ask you the same question I asked you.
Okay, please, ask your question.
So it's for curriculum that, for literacy curriculum, which we have, the board has not reviewed, not approved, has done nothing with planning for this, and it's in this budget requiring additional seven hundred thousand. Why?
So I'm very aware of the work that's been being done by Bob and his team on literacy. Perhaps I was too oblique when I commented every single time on my meetings with Bob about work being done in the literacy curriculum. But there is significant work being done in the literacy curriculum to address the fact that our literacy scores have been stagnant to dropping since implementation of the literacy curriculum that was adopted approximately ten years ago. And we are part of a nationwide trend reexamining the way that reading has been taught and to try and improve it and adopt better practices, so.
But then there's been no board discussion of this.
I think what I would.
There will be.
If I could add something to that, could I?
Please.
So regular adoption of curriculum has not come through the board. I can't answer why. But it is a thing that usually happens in districts and it will be happening in Franklin Public Schools. But it's very typical because you are doing budgeting now, that you're going to do piloting, which you heard a little bit about with Ms. Alinsky's report tonight and Bob's talked about it in ELA, particular in this case, but we're also studying in our other curricular areas. There will always be money earmarked at this time for curriculum adoption. That adoption will come to the board to be looked at. And if it's chosen by the board not to follow the recommendation of the district personnel after piloting and studying and working with staff, then that money wouldn't be spent. And then we would talk about where it would go, likely a roll into forty-six. And then we would have to relook at, like, what curriculum are we gonna look at next? So what you can expect is there will be money earmarked annually. This year, what's up for study in our continuous improvement cycles that we've talked about in front-loaded is the ELA curriculum that will come back in front of the board when we've completed the study, completed piloting, looking at the data, working with staff, coming up with a PD plan will come. As a former director of curriculum, that's a very common practice that I would hope that our board could support, seeing that money in there, because that's what it's gonna mean. It's not going to be spent without you knowing. You're very aware it's in there and you're gonna hear what we're asking it to be spent towards and have the ability to approve or not approve that. And then part of Bob's job too, that we've talked about, will be coming forth every year, so annually doing a review of what is our continuous improvement curriculum cycle. You've seen that circle in lots of his presentations this year. So annually, he'll come back around that and where are we at in that Plan New Study Act in all of our core content areas as far as what it leads to with piloting and then adopting? So piloting's the process prior to adopting, minimal to no expense, to explore different options and identify what works best for our educators and our learners.
Franklin has had review cycle. You showed it to us in January. It was on math. We didn't, we heard nothing on literacy. There was no agenda item that this board discussed on literacy.
So that's the annual report that'll come.
Talking about are multi-year.
Correct. So ELA is in a study phase right now. Exactly. And that annual report will talk about where we are.
That you gave us.
That's because that's for next year. Like, you will see an adoption come through next year, a recommendation for adoption. So the money's just earmarked, it's not spent.
Right, and if we don't approve the recommendations, then the money won't be spent.
Correct. You'll know before the money's spent. There's nothing hidden within there. And maybe not January, February, like I was used to bringing them to the board in April or May, but we'll.
How do we know how much it is?
It's what we've allocated in the budget to look at. That's a pretty common expense, sometimes up to a million dollars. It really depends what you're looking at and what we can put in the budget.
I, I think we can assume that they've done some, that the, that the professional staff has done some of this work and that, yes, this is budgeting for the future. We don't, I think this is a normal budgeting process.
My concern would be if we don't budget for it. It's normal in the districts I've worked in prior to this. I can say that. And I would say my worry would be if we would say, let's pull that out, then we're doing all this study and we're saying we need to update programs and that we value education, but then we're not allocating money and planning ahead to be ready to bring something to the board that's been vetted, that will have educators in front of you to talk about. Like, my worry would be then we wouldn't have that money there. So we would mislead our educators and say, hey, we're looking at what's best for them. You heard some of them speak tonight about looking at ELA in the elementary. But then we wouldn't have allocated that funding to potentially be able to bring something to the board.
I think the way I look at it, I think is that when you are going to buy a car, for example, you have to plan, what is my good pay monthly installment, what is my down payment going to be, you know? And that's called as a, I think, you know, good planning in buying a car. Literacy is very important to us. So if you're planning for that, to improve the literacy, which we all of us want, which all of us are passionate about, we have to do that because, as Angie said, the whole nation is falling behind that, you know, on that. And we as a district must ensure each avenue because education and then the road, school district primary role is to make, give the platform to the students to succeed. And having that, when you're going for shopping, just like her, we are going for literacy planning, having some money allocated is the right budgeting process, according to me. At least, if we don't use it, means you can go with a $10,000 down payment, but maybe the salesperson will only ask you only $2,000 and you, $8,000 is still left in your stuff, you know? So having that money allocated is always important. We are going for shopping. And it is the educational process which kind of, you know, I, I do hear Linda's point that when we will see, you know, what is being allocated, but with that perspective specifically, you know, I think we will get the staffing report hopefully in June. But with the literacy, if you're going for shopping, if you're investing in that pilot project, you have to allocate the money. Without the money allocated, we all, you know, because it's as if you're doing all the research and all that stuff and then, okay, now then what? You know, then we don't have the money for that.
And he has done such an amazing job. I think we heard from our first teacher commenter just about how much trust he's managed to build within the professional staff of the district within this short year in terms of bringing people on board. Like, looking at one's process, especially when it comes to something as personal as reading and literacy, can be a very emotional process. And he's been working very diligently, deliberately, methodically, and thoughtfully to build a process that will bring everyone along to end up at the best place for our learners. And so I think to take this budget line item away from that process would be cutting the knees out from underneath it, and it would be a mistake.
I'm not even sure what the, the money is for.
Curriculum.
It's for curriculum.
Can I finish?
I'm sorry. You said, you said, I don't know what this for, and we, and we've said curriculum. And then you've asked the question again, and you've asked the question again. And it comes back to curriculum.
What does that mean? Software, books, training, development?
Yes, yes.
What is that?
Yes. Right?
All-inclusive of those items.
All of the above.
Do you have, how many staff are we training? Is it all levels?
Linda, we will bring all of that to the board. It depends in the rotation where we're at. Because of how much is allocated, it may determine, we can adopt K-five ELA this year, or we can adopt K-eight. Like, very much you're piecing it by how much budget you have to allocate and how much products cost. It varies by product and the technology that might be behind it. So part of putting this in there allows Bob and his team to look at, okay, is this ELA adoption, we're looking across our band, we're gonna be able to do K-five, 4K-five this year, or are we gonna be able to go all the way to eighth grade? That's the big piece that that dollar amount really helps contribute to is how far can we go now and then when we continue advocating that. Supporting that year on end gives some continuity and predictability to the curriculum team to look at resources too and say, in the flow, because what we're constantly challenging each other to do is look at three to five, three to 10 years. What's that implementation? How do you continue to support after implementation? Right? There's a cost beyond that. So how are we then able, if we can allocate and know, predict what's going to be put in that budget amount year to year, we can start to look at, okay, so we can train 4K through fifth grade ELA next year. The following year, we'll be able to adopt the rest, six to eight, and do the training. And we can look at what costs might come with substitutes or other pieces that go with it. So part of that funding and be able to bring that information to you, which you would see, is knowing what we can depend about, depend on being there to draw out that schedule, because it's not just a year by year. There's a certain plan to it, a cadence for the learners and the staff.
But we are always implementing and supporting curriculum. There's, there must be base dollars in this budget right now that would be, because you're not, you're discontinuing some curriculum, replacing it. So there's gotta be some base dollars. We just don't have to layer on that much. And I've seen no plans. So that's, those are my concerns. I'm not gonna say anymore. I understand you've got more coming, but it's concerning.
Okay.
Thank you. So anybody else have further questions?
Yes, I have another question.
Please.
You mentioned debt service. Nothing new here, guys. We are defusing how much in this budget?
I have.
Page, please.
$3.8 million, so I think.
$3.8 million. So if I look at.
Linda, can you tell me about Patreon?
I'm finding it right now. Debt service is on page twenty-one.
Or three point two million, sorry.
Twenty-one, you see a budget for expenditures of $7.8 million. If you flip the page, you'll see the requirements for principal and interest for twenty-three, twenty-four is $4.6 million. Those are obligations. Anything over that amount is, is discretionary, is overtaxing. Because we don't have to levy for that. Our debt is not due. So, and the difference, the $3.6, it's a, it's a pretty huge number that we, we could buffer our tax levy increase with that and lower that.
Good point.
I hope you consider that at the end, because you're right. There's a lot that happens, but please be aware that there is a huge amount of defeasance in here that is overtaxing.
Noted.
That's what I would call it.
There's a huge amount of defeasance. You would call it overtaxing. Is that what you're, that's what you're saying?
Yep, noted.
Yep, that's because levy is what pays for that.
Okay.
I understand. What I'm saying is, they're calling for defeasance. Your editorial is that that's overtaxing.
It's more taxes than we need.
That's okay. That's your opinion.
Thank you. Further questions? And this is a preliminary budget. I think we need to focus on that.
It means it's, it's still a budget that's gonna authorize expenditures. So it's not like it's make-believe, a trial budget. It's real.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions? Thank you very much. Treasurer's report is available in Board Doc's library. Board liaison reports.
I've got two.
Please.
So I met with Kelly Schultz. She's the interim principal at Ben Franklin. She's a wonderful teacher. She's taught kindergarten for over fourteen years. She's acting as interim principal while Ms. Jewell's out on maternity leave. She's been an instructional coast in the district and is currently achieving her principal's license. And I think we would do well to keep her in the district. I was very impressed with her. She cited some wins in Ben Franklin this year. They had good retention of their EAs this year. And she specifically cited that Ben Franklin is lucky enough to have space for their EAs to have a workroom that's specifically theirs, and that they've done a good job of trying to specifically incorporate EAs into team planning in their professional learning communities at Ben Franklin. So she did say that there was one spot that was never filled, but that they've had better retention than has been seen at other schools. So I thought that was notable. And MAP data was gonna be dropped on Friday, so I didn't have a chance to talk to her about that. And we're gonna have a book club. I met with Bob immediately following our previous meeting. We did talk about the ELA curriculum, which I think I touched on adequately in our previous conversation. We also talked about world language, which is currently at sort of a stage four in evaluation. And he cited the need that for whatever curricular planning is gonna happen in our world language departments, it's gonna need to take into account that there's gonna be fluidity in those teaching positions, because that is currently the nature of world language teaching positions, is there's just a lot of coming and going across all districts in that position. So they're trying to make sure that the standards in the curriculum are very clear and very easy to get up to speed on. That is all I have.
Thank you.
I have liaison report from my Forest Park visit. I'm the liaison at Forest Park. I met with Jenna last week. Talked a lot about the end of the year and kind of the celebrations that they're having for the different, you know, the wins that they've had this year in terms of just kind of the changes that they've had. Talked about the eighth grade promotion and then looking ahead to next year with their changes in their staffing. Sorry, I need to have my back to you, used to being in. Sorry, I don't think I have my back to you, I'm used to being in. In their staffing and they're having their, you know, their four-person houses and things like that. So just talking about all the planning that goes into that and adjusting those things. But lots of really great, really great, really great things happening at Forest Park. It's going to be exciting to see how that moves forward.
Thank you. Linda, please.
I did attend to CISA One convention, which
How was it?
Just pretty dry business meeting. And I fought hard to be elected to the board of control.
Did you get elected?
I did.
Had a girl, Linda.
Woo-hoo.
How many people?
Sounds like it's going to be almost as exciting as the convention. But Mike, you did say maybe the directors were reporting something exciting, possibly? Okay.
Yes, yes.
You did, we did have a slight interaction over the box lunch we got with other fellows for districts. Your friend from Freefield did suggest, since you have your bus license, you should be picking up everybody and take us to that meeting.
Well, they missed you, Mike.
I thought, yeah, it is, it's, it is out there.
It is out there.
It is out there, so.
I'll pick you up and take you out there virtually.
Well, they, you did say they're going virtual, but it sounds like it's been kind of a struggle. But there's a lot of turnover there. This board of control has seven new members too, so everybody is, is new. So, let's see. I think the Zoom works great with SWSA, I don't know why it wouldn't work with this either.
I agree completely and wholeheartedly.
But the guy that was there forever, right, on the board changed.
Yes, yes. Yes, so I think, it sounded to me like change was in the offing. But they're working on a way to make sure that it's, that meetings are the way they should be, which, it seemed to me it was when we did virtual the last one. Anybody else have any?
I met with Mrs. LaPlante at Countrydale, got, got in there for my one, my one liaison visit, and it was a delight. And one thing that she, I said, you know, what's on your wish list? Obviously salaries, I, I'm, just wish we could pay our teachers more, obviously, they need it, they deserve it. But I said, if we can't control that, me personally, what's another thing that could keep teachers, attract teachers? You know, our teachers are going to be, you know, the newest teachers are 20. You know, I saw my daughter's best friend there. And what's going to attract a teacher who, you know, is not going to stay at a job for, if it's not, if it doesn't suit them? And she said flexibility. And so obviously, teachers know that they have to schedule their appointments during the summer and they have these big breaks, but she said, you know, during the year, it can be just really a hardship for them to, to get off for a specific event of their kids or a vacation. She said she spends $1,000 extra on plane tickets because, you know, she has to go on a certain day. So obviously, it's not something you can snap your fingers and make a reality, but I just think if that's one thing that we could aspire to in five years, I don't know, is just offering more flexibility during the school year to allow teachers to take that, that special day. And it sounds like that's not something that is readily available now. So, and she said all districts are, face that, and I'm thinking, well, if we could set ourselves apart and be that district where we're, we have just a little more flexibility, hey, they'd be knocking down our doors. So it was great, and I'm just so happy to be here, even with all this stuff.
Thank you. Anybody else? Board liaison reports or school and community engagement reports?
Well, school and community engagement, I mean,
It's May.
It's been an event every single night, I think, right?
There has, there's been a lot of events and we've attended some of them.
I mean, the most important thing for me is that Obie and I got to be therapy dogs during Teacher Appreciation Week at the middle school. It was pretty awesome. We did visit over here too. He was the dog, I was the handler.
I was just, no, there's been a lot of things. I will just, I mean, there's been a lot of events, we've all been going to, but I just wanted to specifically say I did attend the community conversation that we had with our gifted families on Monday, similar to our special education meetings that we had earlier this year. And again, it was just really good to hear from families and their experiences and how we as a district can, you know, work to improve that experience, so.
Thank you.
And there's still another concert next week.
There's more teams?
Wednesday night jazz at the high school, middle school and high school jazz next week, Wednesday night, 7 o'clock, be there, it'll be awesome.
Seven, that's usually, usually at 6.
I think they're always at 7. Wednesday night.
All right, thank you. I'm looking for a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851C for discussion of district administrator evaluation.
It's all moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Sopersky. We have a roll call, please.
Yes, Dr. Khan?
You're.
Mrs. Sopersky?
Yes.
Mrs. Swinkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Beer?
Aye.
Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Mrs. Yank?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Motion passes. We are in closed session at 8:56.
He's present.
I love Mike's red socks. Very professional. Red's my favorite color in the whole speech.
Is it? Is anybody waiting to come back in? No?